Recording in progress.
Welcome. This is just such a wonderful evening we're about to have. Welcome to the City Council regular meeting this Monday evening, May 6th. I now call this meeting to order. And I ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Our first ceremonial item, San Mateo High School's 4.0 grade point average graduate recognition. Looking at the number of students we have tonight, I know our future is secured. There are so many, so congratulations. This is one of my favorite ceremonial items of the year and we get to celebrate, as you all know, our students with a 4.0 GPA. We have lots of people who are with us tonight who are excited to congratulate our students. So I believe that City Clerk McTaggart told you, but the way it's going to work is I will call up the principals one by one and the students will be ushered in to be congratulated by the council members. And each school will have an opportunity to have a photograph with the entire council after each school's full list of names has been read. It's going to take a while because there are so many. Photos will take place next to our city flag. Once each school has been recognized, we will ask that you please exit the council chamber to make room for the next school. So with that bit of background in mind, I would like to welcome up the Principal of Aragon, Valerie Arbizou. And Rich Hedges, Councilmember Hedges and Councilmember Lorraine are going to greet the students. So Principal Arbizou, welcome. It is good to see you again.
It's really good to see you too. My name is Valerie Arbizou. I'm principal at Aragon High School. And tonight, these are the Aragon Dons who were able to make it. We have 42 valedictorians this year from Aragon alone. It's pretty amazing. Whenever I tell people how many we have, the first response is you can't possibly have that many tonight, especially graduation and graduation's never going to end. We'll have one of them speaking. What I appreciate most is that these are all students who have a 4.0 in their high school career. They have very different, they have very different ways that they've got to a 4.0. They have very different interests, but they have all managed to use their study skills and forge ahead and persist. They all started their freshman year in high school in distance learning. So it was distance learning and then they forged right through. I'm so proud of them. So thank you tonight for allowing us to be here to celebrate them as well. And with that, I'm going to get on with my list because it's a long one. Tristan Carrington. Vishal Dandamudi. Victoria Daniloff. We are right in the middle of AP testing also, so there's a number that I'll read their names, but they're not able to make it tonight. Carol Darv, Alexandra Ding, Cordova Luzdalsi, Maya Ephron, Noah Finnberg. And now we're going to pick right back up again with Lupika Goel. And Stuti Goel. Caroline Harger, Evan Wang. We're not able to be here tonight, but I do have Nicole Jin. Chin Yi Kong. There we go. Hunter Kwan, Cheryl Lam, Leo Levitt. Evan Lee, Christopher Lin. Olivia Lo, Isabel Li, Rachel Ma, Areti Macropolis, Taylor Martin, Elizabeth McGilpin, Galiit Moff. Kalen Wen. Konstantinos Paparizos, Maya Pappas. I have Satvik Reddy, Benjamin Rickett, Nolan Rivera, Zachary Shanker. Elon Smila. Quincy Tang, Ryan Vatuoni, Ashley Wong. Zen Yoshikawa. Kate Young. And Andrew Yu round out our list.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Good morning, Mayor. Principal Arbizou?
Yes.
My daughter is a sophomore at Aragon. Thank you for all you do. Go Dons. I do know, and I don't know that everyone does, that you will be stepping down as principal this year. And I wanted to thank you for your years of service to Aragon High School. Let's all give you a good round for Principal Arbizou.
You're lovely. Thank you.
Everyone on this camera for one quick one. This one right here.
That was very nice you said that. Okay. And our second group of illustrious seniors is from Hillsdale High School. And I actually had the pleasure of being over there just a couple of weeks ago for Democracy Day. And I want to say it was an amazing experience and I hope it becomes an annual tradition. So Principal Jeff Gilbert, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a treat to host Democracy Day and this is how it happened, some amazing students. These students, of course, started on screens. They are ending up at UC Berkeley and San Jose State and some of them are going a little further to Cal Poly or Davis. Some of them are going a lot further to Northeastern and Columbia and Clemson, Tufts and other schools. Berkeley this year turned out to be the school of choice, it seemed. And so we have a lot of bears, golden bears. Is that what they are in Berkeley? Yeah. I tend toward a more of a cardinal red myself, but they will become, they've started on screens, they are now going to school and what they have become, what they will become. A lot of them are majoring in STEM areas, engineering, environmental science, biological sciences, industrial design, and also, near and dear to my heart, political science, philosophy, economics, marketing. So a wide range of pathways for them. But tonight, we're here to celebrate what they are and who they are. They're musicians, jazz and classical musicians. They are lawyers, several on our mock trial team that is the best in the state. Many of them are athletes, softball players, tennis players, water polo, track and cross country. They're also artists, actors, improv artists, designers, yearbook editors. They're members of clubs, Hillsdale Effect, which feeds or provides microloans to women in Guatemala, robotics clubs, Best Buddy Club, investment club. They're volunteers in hospitals and clinics. They lifeguard, they tutor, and they have their own unique interests. The study of Oriental silks or a research into heart health in countries as far away as India. They have suffered setbacks, of course, including multiple concussions, but they have never in four years earned a grade lower than A. That is, of course, significant, but what we hope they have learned over the last four years is that is not what defines you. What is more important is what you've given to our community. And so Hillsdale High School is very proud of this group of students and would like to thank them for everything they've done for our school. And now it's my pleasure to read their names and they'll come across. I guess you already have your certificates. They'll just line up over here. All right. Maxwell Armstrong. Abby Bartfeld. Aidan Cheng. Not in attendance, Alexander Kerion. And Alex Chang. Not here tonight, Isabella Chun. Rachel Faquet. Jacqueline Jewell. Kennedy Jones. Owen Colmbach. Now, a few who aren't here tonight, Daniel Shung, Takumi Koneko, Manning Karahashi. Oh, we do have you. We have one here. Come on up. Highlight your name. I forgot to highlight that name. Trajan King and Noah Cassane. Here tonight. Alephtheria Karatas. Jacob Lee. Ryan Musich. Brianna Pousik. Jordan Robinson. Claire Shelton. Piper Shea. Somya Singh. Jack Spillner. Mia Takiyoshi. Audrey Visvanathan. Maya Wu. And the names of those who are not here, Trajan King, Noah Cassane, Amelia Lamparsky, Jaden McComber, Olivia Murray, Joluk Parek, Amanda Shelton, Deanna Spencer and Jeremy Tran. Thank you.
You're taller, Joe, so I'm just going to let you do it.
Quick one, right over here. Everyone, over here. Go Knights!
Did you get it, Joey?
Yep. We got a nice angle.
Yep, congratulations.
Yeah.
So a next door neighbor was in that bunch.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone. We have important business to get to. Happy important business. Our next group of illustrious seniors is from San Mateo High School. And we are honored to have Assistant Principal Holtz here tonight to share the good news. And Councilmember Lee will be greeting all of you as you walk by.
Excellent. Good evening, San Mateo City Council members. Mayor Nash, my name is Mike Holtz. I'm one of the Assistant Principals of San Mateo High School and I'm representing Yvonne Chu tonight. Unfortunately, she's a little under the weather and could not make it. So the San Mateo class of 2024 has 18 valedictorians to recognize this evening. Since AP exam started this week, we have 11 of our 18 here with us tonight. In addition to celebrating their ability to maintain non-weighted academic 4.0 GPAs over the course of a minimum of seven semesters while earning straight A's in all their courses, they're academicians. They are members of our math team, mock trial, robotics, model UN, science bowl team, biology Olympiad Club. Our mock trial team came in first place in San Mateo County's Northern Division. The valedictorians have a diverse and varied background with many interests. They manage to balance academics while pursuing extracurricular activities. They are athletes. They have been on our school track, schools track and field, soccer, cheer, basketball, water polo, swimming, wrestling, flag football and tennis teams. They are performers and artists, musicians, actors and dancers. We have two of our students completing our art certificate program. Our students have been on many stages from performing in our musicals or concerts in the San Mateo Performing Arts Center, playing their sports on our stadium field, on our courts and in our pool. Many have also displayed art in our campus art gallery and around our local community. They are service oriented, having been active members in our student clubs like Interact, Red Cross, Student Equity Council and our peer tutoring program. In addition to everything they do, they wanted to share that they have, that we have a chess lover, a visual artist, an aquarium keeper, a classical pianist, several math lovers and a possible future educator among them. It's pretty incredible to hear about all the spectacular achievements our young adults have accomplished in such a short time. It is an honor and a privilege to congratulate and recognize San Mateo's High School class of 2024 valedictorians.
I made a special request to also be part of this ceremony because I have a bear cat. I hope one day my son will be standing where you are. And so it means a lot to be, this is my fifth year doing the ceremony. And as my kid gets older and older, I can see, you know, the inspiration that you all are bringing into our community and laying the path for kids like my kid. So thank you.
Okay, so I'll present the names. We start off with Isabella Choi. Anya Guradat. Rowan Hepler. Stanislav Avitsarov. Mark Ri. Vinayak Sarkar. Leo Sajmko. Zaei Shah. Anna Seben. Tamana Suria. And Nikki Sai.
And now we have the honor of introducing the seniors from Sarah High School and Principal Charles J. McGrath to come up and speak. And our deputy mayor, Rob Newsom, is going to greet the students.
Thank you, Mayor Nash and members of San Mateo City Council. I bring you greetings on behalf of your neighbors at 451 I bring you greetings on behalf of your neighbors at 451 20th Avenue. It was great to be back here again to celebrate the Class of 2024. Sarah High School continues to be a school of choice for families who want their boys educated in the tradition of what it means to be a man and a person of faith, integrity, service, and wisdom. Over the four years at Sarah High School, our boys have done so many things to continue to demonstrate what it is to be somebody who exemplifies the ideals of faith, academically challenged in a faith-based environment. This afternoon and this evening, we have thirteen of our top ten students who qualify based on weighted and are unweighted GPA, who are the very best academically, who will go on to do wonderful things both in college and in life. So we are so very proud in each and every one of them. At this time of the year, our boys are being pulled in a number of different directions. So some of these students here tonight have already completed two AP exams today. Some of them have AP exams tomorrow. We have the spring concert going on tonight, and we have made it through the regular competition for baseball, and we're continuing to go on to play in the WCAL Baseball Tournament, which starts tomorrow night. So it's a very busy time of the year. Our boys exemplify everything of what it means. So I'm so very proud in each and every one of them for their interest in their academics. Some have shown extreme interest in STEM, in history, in English, in science, in social studies, and in theology. They balance that with going out into communities to do various amounts of community service, whether that's at Second Harvest, working in the various food banks, and meeting those number of hours for their service projects, which we fold into their experiences at Sarah. So I'm very honored tonight to introduce ten of our thirteen students. Three of our students could not be with us tonight. So I will introduce them by name, and we'll begin to congratulate them. The first is Michael Bamford Grzel. Next, we have William Borden. Next, we have our Student Council President, Alan Bryan. Leonard Bus. One of our three valedictorians, Sean Devgin. Another one of our valedictorians, Thomas Egbert. Bruno Faro could not be with us tonight. Next, we have Joseph Kimball. He's not with us either, but we can congratulate him. Next, we have John Merwin. Merwin, sorry. Andrew Saberino. Ryan Shaw. Our final valedictorian for the school year, Jake Turner. And finally, Mason Waymire, who could not be with us tonight.
And I'm sure, as we asked every group, you're all pre-registered to vote, correct? Yes, or you're gonna do it immediately, right? We are going to take a five-minute recess so we can get set up. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations. Have a wonderful evening. Lots of ice cream and pizza now. So five-minute recess.
I didn't, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, like, I didn't know, I was not sleeping. I literally realized I'm doing this today at nine a.m. My big guy.
We are going to continue with our second ceremonial item tonight, one that I am particularly very excited about, the Rotary Club of San Mateo's Centennial Recognition. And because I have to be totally transparent, I am a member of the Rotary Club of San Mateo. So with that, no, 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 no applause, no, no, no. But with that, I would like to invite down John Barrett, who's the Rotary President, to receive the citation, or the resolution, excuse me. So, President Barrett, the proclamation reads as following. Whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo was chartered on January 15, 1924, as a service-above-self organization whose members attest to the four-way test. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? And whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo is the largest club in our district and a member club of Rotary International, one of the largest global service organizations with over forty-six thousand clubs worldwide and a membership of 1.4 million. And whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo works locally to support education by providing dictionaries every year to third graders in the San Mateo Foster City School District, mentoring high school students, and awarding scholarships totaling $2 million, $160,000 annually for college-bound students who need financial support. And whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo, in collaboration with the City of San Mateo and other local organizations, established Rotary Haciendas and Rotary Floridas Senior Apartment Communities to provide 130 affordable housing units and continues to support the ongoing work of these housing communities while continuing to seek additional opportunities to build much-needed, additional, affordable senior housing. And whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo has engaged in significant civic improvement projects throughout the community, including the establishment of the Jim Chalmers Rotary Picnic Grove in Central Park and the furnishing of conference rooms in the San Mateo Public Library. And whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo continues to lead impactful community service projects, such as the annual Environmental Cleanup Day at Coyote Point and garden beautification tree planting days at local elementary schools. And whereas the Rotary Club of San Mateo supports life-changing international service projects, such as helping to eradicate polio, bringing educational opportunities to students in Cambodia, partnering with Namaste and students from Hillsdale High School and the College of San Mateo to provide microloans to Guatemalan women to assist them in setting up and successfully managing small businesses. Now, therefore, the City Council of San Mateo commends and appreciates the Rotary Club of San Mateo as it celebrates a centennial distinguished by 100 years of vital service to our community through its significant contributions to local schools, college-bound students, affordable senior housing, civic and community projects, and international service. Rotary Club of San Mateo, 100 years of vital service to our community, with appreciation. Lisa Diaz-Nash, Mayor, May 6, 2024. Congratulations, President Barrett. And would you care to say a few words, President Barrett?
Yes, yes. So Mayor Lisa, it's so good to have you up there being a part of our Rotary Club. And Chief Barberini is back there, and he's in our club. So I feel honored that you're here. And thank you so much to the City Council folks, the board, the commissions, committees, everybody who contributes such a great job for the city of San Mateo. There's not much more I can say that you already mentioned that we do, but I have a confession. I did go to Sarah High School, Class of '69, but I didn't get a 4.0. So I feel kind of vilified a little bit. But anyways, it's great to be here. So I don't have a whole lot to say because you said it all, but I do want to just reiterate the fact that Rotarians, you know, we have camaraderie and fellowship we do. We mentor young people. We dominated, like you said, about $2 million for scholarships for high school, two-year college people, and also the four-year colleges. But so our main goal really is to spread peace, goodwill, and understanding with our community and also around the world. So the last thing I'd like to say is, as a member of our club, I think it's accurate to say that we embrace the following quote from football coach John Wooden, who emulates our Rotarians' reasons why we do what we do. So he said, "You cannot live in a perfect, you can't live a perfect day without doing something for someone who will never be able to pay you back." So we're not here to accolade. We just enjoy servicing the community. And we love this city, and we stand firm to assist the city and the community every opportunity we have. But thank you so much. Very kind. Very kind.
And we now have a proclamation for National Police Week. So could I please ask our chief at Barberini to come on down? Thank you, Chief, and fellow Rotarian. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 12 falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the San Mateo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of residents of our community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the San Mateo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now, therefore, I, Mayor Lisa Diaz Nash of the City of San Mateo and on behalf of all the City Council, do hereby call upon citizens of San Mateo and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12 to the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. And I call upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and future, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. I further acknowledge that Sunday, May 15, 2024, is Peace Officers Memorial Day and call upon all citizens of the City of San Mateo to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. With appreciation, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor, May 6, 2024. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. We do appreciate the support. We realize that policing a city of any size, especially the size of San Mateo, cannot be done with just a police department. And we rely heavily on your support and the support of those that live, work, and visit our city. And this is truly a partnership. And we recognize that and we value it every day. I just want to, being that it is Police Appreciation Week, I just want to mention how proud and fortunate I feel to work with some of the finest men and women that I've ever encountered. They handle hundreds of calls for service a day. They're put in situations that are extremely difficult and often no-win, and somehow they manage through it with flying colors. And I feel lucky every day to come to work and be able to work with them. The timing of the May 15 Police Memorial Day is more meaningful, I think, to our city, given its proximity to the anniversary of the murder of Sergeant Gordon Joinville. On May 23, 1968, Sergeant Joinville was shot and killed while serving the City of San Mateo. And we will be, as we do every year, we will be commemorating and remembering his service and that tragic day on the 23rd of May as well. So it's a coincidence, but it kind of strikes home, being so close to that Memorial Day and the ceremony that we put on every year to remember Sergeant Joinville. And that type of service will never be forgotten. But I want to thank all of you for taking the time to recognize what our police officers and all of our staff at the Police Department do every day. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges had something he wanted to say.
Chief, I want to thank you for your leadership, not only your leadership, but all of the people that follow you in the Police Department. I don't miss very many days that I don't see another crime that you've solved, usually crimes that have been inflicted on our citizens. Your leadership in the Retail Crime Task Force that's being very successful. Your leadership in setting up the Resource Officers that go out with our police officers in very difficult times with emergencies with families. And I could go on and on, but this is one of the finest police forces I've ever engaged. And I have a cousin who was the Police Chief of Kansas City, Kansas. So I have members of my family in police activity. So, and I really want to thank you and all of our officers.
Thank you, sir.
Can I invite a couple others for our photo? They're much more photogenic than I am.
No donuts?
Well, having such a wonderful beginning of the meeting, we have to keep going. So, City Clerk, will you please read the Consent Calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, Private Development and Right-of-Way Support Services Amendment. Item number five, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant Application. Item number six, Dontown Parking Garage Safety Project Agreement. Item number seven, Underground Flow Equalization System Contingency Amendment. Item number eight, Citywide Small Trash Capture Project Agreement. And finally, item number nine, Community Development Block Grant 2024-25 Annual Action Plan Adoption.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the Council wishes to pull an item from the Consent Calendar?
I'd like to pull nine, please.
Number nine? Okay, City Clerk. If there is any member of the public who wishes to comment on any Consent Calendar, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for Consent Calendar items only. Do we have any requests for comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have a request to speak on the Consent Calendar, item number five. I would like to invite Ethan to please approach the podium.
Three minutes? Thank you. Your Honor, honorable Councilmembers in the City of San Mateo, my name is Ethan Deitcher, a housing policy intern for State Senator Josh Becker and a lifetime resident of San Mateo. I'm speaking today representing myself and not Senator Becker. However, a substantial part of my work with the senator has focused on helping Senate District 13 cities meet their Regional Housing Needs Allocation Targets, or RENA. I firmly believe applying for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant, a program partially designed to meet RENA targets, is key for San Mateo to reach its goals. First, some census statistics. San Mateo's population density is 8,587 people per square mile, almost double the peninsula 34 times the Californian average and 92 times the national average. People clearly want to come live in San Mateo, the center of a burgeoning hub of innovation with access to public transit, local businesses, and an awesome police force. But with demand comes a cost, a high median monthly housing cost, that is, of $3,031 a month, pricing people out of our beloved city. And a key driver of the high prices is the relative scarcity of housing supply. Even though housing density in San Mateo is 89 times greater than the U.S. average, its vacancy rate is 35% below the national average, and we must relieve this supply and demand imbalance. Using 2022 RENA data, we can assess how much affordable housing San Mateo is making. San Mateo has attained 150% of its above-moderate income target, but only 35% of its affordable goal, or only one affordable unit for almost every three above-moderate ones. Affluent individuals and families have disproportionately favorable access to this growing housing supply, leaving many with the impression that San Mateo prioritizes the affluent over the less fortunate. But in reality, I believe this characterization is unfounded and ignores three key financial barriers that inhibit affordable housing production. First, high construction costs exacerbated by high interest rates stretch our already limited budget used to fund first responders, criminal justice, public health, and other programs that depend on local government. Second, low state and federal investment, especially considering that the peninsula contributes a disproportionately large fraction of state income tax revenue, forces cities like San Mateo to turn to private financiers to fund affordable housing projects. By placing businesses in charge instead of local government, housing construction becomes profit-motivated instead of public housing policy motivated. Third, allocating public funds to build affordable housing could potentially drive away existing residents, turn away prospective ones, and cause business owners to relocate, decreasing the city's tax revenue base and economic prosperity. Hence, it's commendable that San Mateo has permitted 644 affordable units from 2015 to 2022. Nevertheless, a successful reapplication to the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant Program would help relieve these economic stresses by bringing well-deserved and urgently needed funds to our community to make it more inclusive. Thus, I urge my local government to adopt the resolution, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Madam Mayor, item nine has been removed to be considered separately.
Yes.
Is there a motion from the Council on items four through eight?
I would make a motion on items four through eight. Move to approve them?
Second.
Could you read the roll, please?
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and now let us turn to Councilmember Lee to comment on item number nine.
Yes, so I pulled the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And I noticed that there was some information omitted in the staff report listing out the proposed infrastructure improvements that would account for almost $400, or slightly over $400,000 in the CDBG funds. And I know, coming from North Central, a community equity priority area where our community has struggled with a legacy of underinvestment and lack of representation for generations and has been calling on the city for greater transparency in our budgeting process and greater clarity around what infrastructure improvements are being prioritized and which ones are being deprioritized. I think that it would be really beneficial for us to make that information readily available. And I would love to hear from staff if there is a plan to present the action plan, including the street repair plan, to community.
Through the mayor. So I can respond just about the main areas that this item covers with the CDBG grants. It's about $867,000 worth of funding. And this is an annual approval that comes before the City Council. Specifically, the first bucket is the Economic Development Fund. So there's $40,000 each for microenterprise grants, not only through the Renaissance Center to provide entrepreneurialship support, but also Upwards, which is a group that provides childcare, micro-business assistance as well. The next one is just a minor home repair program. The city will fund two providers for home repair for people with accessibility issues. And that's done through Rebuilding Together in the Peninsula, and that's another $127,000. On the street improvement program that Councilmember Lee has brought up, it's the lion's share of the funding. It's $467,000. And it's specifically stated for prioritizing sidewalk repair and potential improvements located in the CDBG priority target area consisting of North Shoreview and North Central Neighborhoods. Right now, I've asked staff to look further into the details of the $467,000. What I have so far at the moment is that a lion's share of that money would go to the Third and Norfolk intersection that has been planned for a while with the city. That's in the Shoreview neighborhood. I'm still looking to get more information just on the upgrades for the North Central Neighborhood sidewalk repairs as well. So more information to come on that. Outside of that, I know that our Public Works Director, we could probably speak more just to, I know our sidewalk repair, we have a program itself. And so I know that we're really focusing on making our investments in equity priority neighborhoods in this city. And that would include both of these neighborhoods, North Central and also Shoreview as well. So if it's not only in the CDBG grant program, there are other investments that are happening in our sidewalk replacement program, looking at those areas. But more information to come because I don't have it at my fingertips right now.
Well, thank you for that. And I think that this also dovetails with another idea that I know that we've been discussing, which is doing hot mapping and having more public-facing, easier-to-navigate, more accessible resource that community can look to to better understand where infrastructure improvements and those quality-of-life investments are happening in our neighborhoods, close to us, or in our broader communities as well. And so do you have any updates? Or what's the progress on that tracking and hot mapping?
So I know that our GIS division has been looking into that. I need to go back and get an update. But even on top of that, if we really look at even layering in our urban canopy overall and making those investments where we need to see more urban forestry and more growth in our communities, that's just another area. But it's duly noted. I'll get an update, and we'll go ahead and we'll share it with the Council, either in your weekly update or upcoming meeting.
Thank you.
Excellent. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Through the mayor, if I may. I would recommend taking public comment on this item.
Oh, that would be very helpful. Thank you very much for making that recommendation. Let us open it up for public comment.
This is item number nine on the Consent Calendar. If you wish to speak on this item, please provide me with the yellow's Request to Speak slip. Or if you're attending remotely, please raise your hand. Seeing no requests, that closes public comment.
All right, thank you very much. So let us take a motion to approve item number nine. Okay, and could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. So next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not on tonight's agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents the Council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda, but your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is genuinely limited to 15 minutes. However, that is subject to Council's discretion and can be extended if Council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. So do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, through the mayor. Currently, I have seven requests to speak on non-agendized items. I will give you a moment to raise your hand if you're in Zoom and you wish to speak on general public comment. Madam Mayor, that's a total of seven requests to speak.
So that would be three minutes?
Three minutes per speaker. So I'm going to call the next three speakers. If you could please line up against the wall here. That'll help us get your comments expeditiously. So the first three speakers are Dev Patnake, followed by Jesús Sanchez and Yasmin Fuentes. followed by Jesus Sanchez and Yasmin Fuentes.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and all the other council members. My name is Jesus, and I'm a resident of North Central. The reason I'm here is because of the bike lanes that affect my family and neighbors. There are many circumstances that I have seen like a kid that aren't well-done. Because before the bike lanes or before the parkings, before there weren't parkings, I could play basketball in my driveway. And now that there's no parkings because of the bike lanes, I have no space to play basketball or soccer. I like sports, so I play in a club, and I need to go to Redwood Titty. And because I need to go that far, it's stressing for my parents to look for parking, because there's no parking. So there have been seniors that need to walk from five to seven blocks because they don't have no parking in front of their house. And I wish I could help them, but it just makes me really sad because I can't really do much. One day, I want to be sitting where the Mayor Diaz Nash is sitting right now and try to do the best I can to help this beautiful city that saw me have birth. And I'm very happy with the city, but I just want to get the parkings back for my parents and for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Dave Potnake, followed by Yasmin. We're going to go in the order the speaker slips were provided. If you could please come up to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and council members. I have not been involved in town government at all up until recently as I became involved in issues around the parking on Humboldt. My observations are this, is that, number one, city council broadly is incredibly well-meaning and is looking to do the right thing in this area, as I've heard from each of you. The second thing I've discovered is that our city employees and planning team really are looking to do the right thing. And I know we are engaging in work right now to come up with a larger plan. What I've also learned is that there are many folks in our community, particularly in the North Central community, who, while they do believe in both of those processes, are looking for immediate signs that they're being heard. Right? Immediate signs. What are quick fixes that we can do to put progress into place quickly? The sooner we could do that, I think the better that would be. Perhaps in bringing back a few parking spaces quickly, removing some of the no-turn signs that would be there, just some of the quick motion that we could make to show that our government is hearing us. So you all are incredibly hard-working, well-meaning people, and I think some signs of commitment would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Yasmin Fuentes, followed by Trina Pierce and Olivia Farris.
All right. Good morning, Mayor Diaz Nash and all the other councilors. My name is Yasmin Fuentes, and I live in North Central on Humboldt Street. I just want to talk about how removing all the cars on Humboldt Street has affected not only my family, but others too. First, I want to talk about how many friends, mothers, and grandparents have to walk two to five blocks away. Then, they have to carry their stuff along with them and their babies. I'm a high schooler, and I want my friends to come over, but some of them can't because they need parking or they need space to park. Or, yeah. So, yeah. And I'm like, I'm kind of mad because my family has to drive. And like, in emergency? What if in an emergency, you have to, what's it called? Take your son or your child to the hospital, but your car is like two blocks away? Now it's going to be a problem because, what's it called? Because it's far away, and now it's an emergency. I'm just saying, I walked a parking back because a lot of family needs them, and there's people that have reasons for needing them. And that's it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just for the folks in the room, we have moved into the business portion of the meeting. So at this point, we typically try to refrain from cheering, cheering, booing, applause. Those are rules of decorum. We find that if we do have applause or booing, it can put a chill on public comment, so please ask that you respect that. So we'll move on to our next speakers, which will be Trina Pierce, followed by Olivia Farris and Connie Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and to all our council members. My name is Trina Pierce. I have lived in North Central for over 60 years. I'm coming here to represent a lot of my neighbors, who a lot of them are scared to speak. They feel retaliation or somebody's going to come knocking on their door. And I think you're all aware that we had over 62% that said no to the bike lane. And we're all in favor of a bike lane. That's not what we're here to say. We want safety too. But on Delaware, you did not remove any cars. I don't understand why Humboldt can't be the same. Why can't we put in a shared bike lane and bring that parking back? Those people are really hurting. I've had many seniors call me for rides. I feel really bad when I can't or when I'm just not here. So it's hurting them. And we know that with COVID, people were dying because they weren't getting out of their house. So now this is making these seniors not leave. If they don't get out of their house by a certain time and they cannot come back by a certain time, they don't go. Because they know when they come back, there is nowhere to park. And that's just not right. These seniors have been here for over 60 years, some of them. They made this area a nice area to live. So right now, what's been said to them is they don't count. It wouldn't be a pretty area if they weren't. These people have kept up their homes. And then the funds that were given were intended for undeserved neighborhoods like North Central to fund projects that were directed for the community. And it was examples of replacement of failed streets, repair of streets, improvement, potholes, traffic commie, improvements to Martin Luther King Park, and new streetlights. We haven't seen a new streetlight since 2022. That's just not right. But we do see people riding on the sidewalks. And I've asked a lot of them, because I've walked. And they say they don't ride because people drive too fast down Humboldt. This neighborhood has asked for stop signs. We've asked for speed bumps, and now we're seeing speed bumps going in all over. We don't understand why we can't get that. And we don't understand why, you know, they're still riding on the sidewalks. We're just asking that you think about the seniors. Think about disabled. And some of them do have disabled kids. I had a child. So it makes a difference. So we're just asking you guys to make our street like Humboldt. Put in street bumps. Put in stop signs. I mean, you just dig a hole and you put in the stop sign. You guys keep saying it's a lot, but it's not like it's electrical and it's a stop light. But thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Olivia Farris, followed by Connie Weiss. And our last speaker for general public comment will be Dave Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and Deputy Mayor Newsom, Councilwoman. My name is Olivet Farris, and I live on Humboldt Street. And I feel like I'm a prisoner in my own home. I, first from COVID, now because of the parking situation. If I leave, someone else will get my parking space. Oh, my gosh. Today, because they're working in my home, I sit in my living room. And there's usually never, because I check on the ring, there's never more than 10 bikers coming down my street, and I live on Humboldt. Today, there was two bikers on the bike lane and one on the street, which is typical. I retired recently, and I thought I was going to be able to go out to lunch with my friends, entertain in my home. Nobody wants to come to my house. They're not going to park their Mercedes four to five blocks away. So, so much for that. Once I left in the evening and I had to park, I don't know, it's maybe three or four blocks away. And I was walking home, and there was someone following me. And I have respiratory issues. So the closer they got, I started to run with my issues or not. And I'm probably not the only person that this is happening to. I feel like myself and my neighbors are being punished. I don't know why we can't have a shared bike lane. On my side of the street, the bike lane is extremely wide. And on the other side of the street, it's extremely narrow. So I don't see why we can't have a shared bike lane. A couple of blocks from me is Burlingame. And on Howard, they have shared bike lanes. Further down on Humboldt, they have shared bike lanes. My neighbors are all very hardworking. They have trucks. They have to park them on side streets. They've been vandalized. Their cars have been keyed. I just feel like we're being punished. So I'm hoping that, and I come all the time, and I'm not going to stop coming, even though my neighbors tell me I'm wasting my time, but I'm not giving up. Because when I give up, I'm going to sell my house and move out of San Mateo. Because it's just ridiculous that I live a normal life.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Connie Weiss, followed by Dave Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and city council members. First of all, I'd like to thank you and say how much I appreciate the conversations and concerns you've had in the past year and a half on the North Central bike lanes. You've shown your respect toward North Central residents and begun a real effort to correct what was done in the past. But I'm asking tonight for you to prioritize that focus and action as it has been over two years that North Central residents have not had something that most of us in other neighborhoods take for granted to be able to keep our cars parked safely in front of, or at least very close, to our homes. When you look at the document written to secure the funds from the Community Development Block Grant, it opens with a list of 10 high-priority items that Trina just went over. The high-priority needs were expanded upon and aligned with resident surveys to satisfy the CDBG requirement that any improvements using the funds would directly benefit North Central residents. With that in mind, it is interesting to note that the word bicycle is used once in the 100-page document. It is on page 94, under the project name "Street and Sidewalk Reconstruction." The description is, quote, "Funding to reconstruct failing streets and sidewalks as well as other pedestrian and bicycle improvements." There was no resident survey response that called out a need for bicycle lanes, and especially not any mention of taxing North Central residents by removing over 200 needed parking spaces to put in the bike lanes. There is no question how the residents of North Central felt about this decision, and they made their voices heard in every possible way before the vote. But North Central residents were ignored by the previous council, and the money intended to be used to directly benefit this underserved community was instead used to benefit residents from surrounding richer neighborhoods so they had a bike path connecting them to their desired destinations. I hope this gives you any encouragement needed to stay on top of this, working with staff to find a solution as quickly as possible that reprioritizes the funds that were to support North Central residents. Please restore their parking while looking to support bike lanes the community will find useful and acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our final speaker will be Dave Cohen.
Three whole minutes. I can breathe in between statements. Honorable mayor and council members, I'm Dave Cohen, speaking for Ethics San Mateo. First of all, I'd like to tell you we're pleased to announce that we have been granted tax-exempt status by the state of California as a public benefit corporation. We worked hard to get there, and that's what we're all about, public benefit. Second of all, I want to inform you that, and I believe you all have a copy and know this, we've released a statement of position regarding Councilmember Lee's disregard of the current city council enacted rules for conduct. Appearing as a witness at a state assembly committee hearing, she failed to state whether she was speaking on behalf of the city or as an individual. She was introduced as a San Mateo city council member and former mayor. And when she spoke, Lee repeated those titles as she began. This is in direct violation of the rules your body has established. Of interest, high interest, is that she edited out those statements from her website posting of her appearance. But it's in the state archives. Lee has given you the clear and direct message of how important it is to enforce the current rules as well as to strengthen them to include the consequences for violations. Please act, and act now. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. And I will close public comment and bring it back to council. But before we go any further, City Manager Kojikian, I think given so many of our community members have talked about North Humboldt and the bike lanes, perhaps you can give us an update?
Yeah, so I'm happy to provide an update. So the council, I believe, about six weeks ago at a previous meeting, approved a contract with a consultant who goes ahead and surveys or handles data. And one of the areas that we are looking at and what I've asked staff to deploy, hopefully in the near future, I'd have to get an update from them, is to really get the data of how many people are actually utilizing the bike lanes so that we have that active data on that. Additionally, I know the subject of the Humboldt bike lanes had come up. Before I got here, I believe it was like in, I believe, March, April, or May of last year when I was watching you guys preparing for my interview. But I know that one of the areas was really focusing on the North Central complete street plans. And that's what I recall watching the videos and seeing. And so I know staff has been working actively, doing outreach. And I'll be personally going out and doing outreach later on this month on the North Central Complete Streets Plan. Also, on a parallel path, get the data and take another look. Understand that we're hearing an impact from the neighborhood as well. And so more information to come. So we have a couple of next steps that staff is working on.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, through the mayor. I-
I think that there, you know, there has been a lot of consternation and frustration coming from the community for many years now about feeling unheard, and clearly articulating our desires, our requests for investment, and not seeing those investments come to fruition in, I think, a meaningful and impactful way on the terms that the community is asking for. And we, you know, we rallied around to support the Complete Streets process, and specifically requested that there was an allocation dedicated to North Central, which is the first of its kind to do a comprehensive analysis and needs assessment of North Central, and actually, you know, looking at solutions that hadn't possibly been considered. There had been no space, there had been no dedicated resources to even contemplate new ideas. And one of the directives that came from the previous, from that conversation, was revisiting the design of the North Central Bike Lane and the North Central Bike Network. And in our Complete Streets presentation, it wasn't, I don't think abundantly clear that that was still part of the mandate and scoping of that contract. And I'm, it's, you know, it's raising concerns, frankly, that, you know, that we have asked, you know, that North Central was given this hope, the second hope, that we would then be heard, right? That there would be serious contemplation of, you know, of how all the puzzle pieces can fit together, right? And all the competing needs. And I'm not, I'm not hearing with abundant clarity that the scoping of the Complete Streets analysis is in fact looking at the Bike Network, or taking a relook at the Bike Network, and considering new ideas for possible relocation redesign. And so I want, I want to make that question really explicit, because I haven't, I don't feel like I've gotten a satisfactory answer. And two years later, having rallied hundreds of community members to come to the table again, and feeling like we're still asking the same question, we're still saying the same thing, and I don't know if you're, if you're hearing me. I don't know if council is hearing me. And so I want to mirror and acknowledge that huge elephant in the room question that I think is still unanswered and unresolved.
So I appreciate you sharing, sharing that background and that information. I don't know, Matt Fabry, do you have any update? I know that we've been working on the North Central, no, not at this time. So I'll go ahead and I'll take a look, work with staff. I know at a minimum, kind of what I said is, we got to understand the data, right? I've heard from residents this evening saying maybe only two or three people only today utilize that. So want to, want to take a look at that, but I'll follow up with staff. I hear loud and clear.
But I, yes, and I appreciate you, and this is obviously not the time to get very deep into it. But, but I will say that, that one of the benefits that, of going through the Complete Streets analysis for North Central was the dedication of weighing, weighing competing needs, right? And trade-offs. And that, that analysis was not done in, I think, a comprehensive way for North Central in the, in the original master bike plan. And that's why we ended up where we are. And so that is why we are all holding our breath for a full and comprehensive analysis that we promised to community through the Complete Streets Plan for North Central.
Got it. I'll go ahead and I'll follow up with staff, through the mayor.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Alex, just to expand on that, it's been a year since we heard from the community last, and we need to show action. Would ask that during the reports and announcement period, we could talk about this as a group and see where we are.
I have something to say as well. So I sent a picture that I took in Washington DC to Martin and asked him to send it out to the rest of the council, of the proper bike lane when, when there's space, and that is to have the biking inside the parking for the cars. There's not enough space on Humboldt to do that. But never again do I want to see, in dense neighborhoods, in working-class neighborhoods, parking removed. We have to have shared bike lanes. It's just too difficult. So many of these people use their trucks, have tool racks, tool racks and trucks with tool racks are the highest theft rate in the city. We've had four thefts out of my neighborhood, and they've all been trucks with tool racks on them. So we can't do this to neighborhoods. We have to figure out a way to keep people safe on bicycles and not make people unsafe in these denser neighborhoods by having to walk blocks to, from their parking place, usually after dark.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. I understand the city manager is, is taking all this into consideration, and you will get back to us.
Yeah, happy, happy to come back and report back. I don't know if I need further direction on the reports and announcements. I think I have enough to understand to go back to staff and go ahead and get a report back, okay?
Great.
No, it's all good.
That was very good. Thank you so much. Okay. Great. All right, well then, let's move on. Thank you to the community for commenting and for coming back and being engaged. And let's move on to our new business, item number 10, Mental Health Awareness Month and Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team presentation. We have Captain Matt Lathene of the San Mateo Police Department and Chief of Police Ed Barberini with us.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. While they're getting set up, I'll just kind of provide some context for the presentation. Like every other department in the city, we are, the police department's always looking to see how we can do better, to improve our service to the community, and to find gaps or voids where we can, we can fill. We've taken some tangible steps to do that. We've embedded a homeless outreach team with the police department. Very soon, we're looking to embed a domestic violence counselor to serve survivors of domestic violence within the police department. But our original effort was the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team, or CWCRT Team. Over the course of the last several years, the instances involving mental health regarding calls for service at the police department have grown. It's not a problem specific to our city. We've seen that in the region, in the state, and nationwide, whether it's due to a greater awareness, or there are some other variables, we don't know. However, it was clear that our response, while requiring a public safety response, these problems were not always solved with handcuffs or enforcement action or an arrest. We needed more, and our police officers have done an extraordinary job of interacting with those folks who are experiencing mental health challenges, but they don't have the technical or clinical expertise to follow up or provide the level of service in order to make an impact, a long-term or sustainable impact on that type of call for service. Generally, we are just basically triaging calls, trying to work through them, trying to hook someone up with services and then go on our way, and there's, there's literally no, no follow-up. So as you know and you're familiar with, we were one of a few cities in the county selected to participate in a pilot program that embedded a mental health clinician within the police department. We are coming to the two-year mark, or two-and-a-half-year mark on that pilot program. It's been an extraordinary success. My experience is that, you know, in my 30 years in law enforcement, I have never been part of a cross-discipline collaboration effort that's had such a tangible impact and been as productive as this one. So what we wanted to do tonight is we wanted to come and provide, we're not asking for any action tonight, we wanted to come and provide the council with an update similar to how we did with the homeless outreach team a few weeks ago. And while I am extremely impressed with the program and see its impact every day, I don't live and breathe it like those in the field do. So we thought we would, we would give you an opportunity to hear directly from those who are in the field every day. Our two clinicians, Brianna Fair, who's been with us since the beginning, and Linda Allen, who has joined us recently, and we, we've actually, the county's actually expanded the program throughout the county, and we now share Linda with the city of Foster City. So I'm going to turn it over to them to describe what they do and tell you a little bit about the program, and I'd be, I'll be available for some questions after the fact if need be.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and council members. My name is Linda Allen, as Chief Barberini mentioned, and I am a part of CWCRT with San Mateo and Foster City. As we begin our presentation this evening, I want to go over a few definitions with you, because these are things that we will be referring to throughout our presentation. The first one is 5150. It's the number of the section of the Welfare Institution Code that allows someone who is experiencing a mental health crisis to be placed on an involuntary hold or detained for 72 hours in a psychiatric hospital. In order to be placed on a hold, you have to meet one of three criteria: danger to self, danger to others, or gravely disabled. Another definition I want to bring to your attention, case management. And it's basically that assessing, planning, and implementing, and coordinating, monitoring a case. When we see clients, the beauty of being a clinician with CWCRT is we can provide a small amount of case management to that client. It's not as though we see the client and be gone. We stay connected to that client to provide some additional support for them. Co-response model involves law enforcement and clinicians working together in response to calls involving mental health or mental illness. And CWCRT is Community Wellness Response, Community Wellness Crisis Response Team. So who is Community Wellness Crisis Response Team? Starred as a CWCRT pilot program in partnership with San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, or BHRS, and four police departments, San Mateo, Daly City, South San Francisco, and Redwood City, is designed to improve law enforcement response to community members experienced in mental health crisis. I'm sure everyone in here knows of someone who has experienced a mental health crisis, whether personally or distantly. In December 2021, CWCRT became active in the community. Since its conception, it's yielded great results, and is being expanded in other communities here within San Mateo County. And that is a result of the work that has been done, a proven work that has been done with a co-response model of law enforcement and clinicians. So I want to bring to your attention some information, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, or NAMI. This is all US information, and again, keeping in mind, we know someone who has experienced mental illness. One in five US adults experience mental illness a year. One in 20 adults in the US experience serious mental illness. Serious mental illness, sometimes requiring to be 5150 or even institutionalized. One in six US youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder, and if nothing else, COVID put a spotlight on the mental illness that affected our youth. And we're still digging our way out from under that because we need more clinicians to do this work. 50% of all lifetime mental illness begins at the age of 14, and 75% by the age of 24. Now, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among people aged 10 and 14. I just want to sit with that for a minute. Okay? San Mateo's response prior to CWCRT coming on board. The officers responding to mental health calls have limited resources to share with the individuals in crisis and their families. For us, we carry a toolbox with us. In that toolbox, we carry supplies, resources to share with these families, and with the individuals who are going through crisis. No capacity for follow-up after a 5150 or a crisis that ends in disengagement. You know, for officers, they're very busy, and they're moving from one case to another, doing the best that they can, contributing to the revolving door of crisis services. So for us, when we go out with our officers, and we can do that case management and follow-up, our follow-up has made a huge difference in that revolving door, and my colleague Brianna will talk a little more about that. Limited access to historical mental health information prior to managing a call. For us, when we come in, we have access to two systems that allow us to see anyone who has participated in services with BHRS, so we can see that information. So when we get a call, we can take a quick glance, we're out the door. We have historical information when we get out there with the officers and with this individual. Limited ability to communicate with community partners in and outside the crisis. We can reach out to community partners. We can make those connections. We can follow up with permission from these individuals with their therapist to say, hey, this happened, how can we best support this client? And that keeps them from falling back into that revolving door. Now, how do we as clinicians support that purpose? Face-to-face crisis assessment, going out on those calls with our officers that are mental health calls. We are out there, the clients see us, even when they're at their worst in their crisis, they remember our faces and our voices. So when we reach out, they have something to hold on to. De-escalation. Sometimes when we go out, they see us, they don't see uniform, so they're more apt to calm down and become less dysregulated, and allow us as clinicians to talk to them. And then, in many cases, then they will continue to have a conversation with the officers. Consultation as needed. Sometimes we're there and the officers have questions for us about these individuals. 5150 evaluation and application or safety plan. Again, if they're in a mental health crisis and they meet those three criteria, danger to self, danger to others, and gravely disabled, then we may have to 5150 them and put them on a 72-hour hold. And then we may get there, and they're dysregulated, and after a while, we can work with them and understand what the situation is. It can be someone who just lost their job, some, a relationship that broke up. But we can work with them, and we can help them create what's called a safety plan. In doing so, creating a safety plan, whether it's verbal or written, reaching out to the person that's going to be their safety plan. And we can follow up with that person to see if they connected with that client. Brief case management and follow-up. We cannot do long-term case management. If we did long-term case management, it would be very challenging to work with the number of clients that we meet with. But we can do brief case management and make sure that they are connected to the appropriate resources. Coordination, collaboration with law enforcement and community partners. Working together, we can make a difference for the folks that are suffering from mental health in this community. At this time, I'm going to turn things over to my colleague.
Hello. Thank you all for listening to us talk about the program tonight.
So just to go off of what Linda said about what we do as a part of our job, outside of 5150s, our job is very broad. We work for everybody from the homeless outreach team at San Mateo to individuals experiencing substance use, cognitive disorders, developmental, and then like Linda spoke about, mental health crisis. A huge part of our job is our follow-up with any range of those individuals in our community, and I'd go as far to say that's the most important part of our job. We wouldn't come here tonight without some data to show you how well the program is doing, because we can talk about how well we think it's going, but data often helps as well. So we had San Mateo Police Department's Crime Analysis put data together from 854 days before the program and 854 days after the program. This first slide I'm going to show you outlines how 5150 applications have been affected. As you can see, 5150s were consistent prior to CWCRT's implementation and after, we started to see a steady decline of about 23%, and it seems to continue to go that route. Why is that important? Why is that good? Isn't the mental health team supposed to be 5150 more people? That's actually the opposite of what we want to do. The point and one of the, one of the goals of this program was to alleviate emergency services and kind of pull back the amount of 5150s that were going and provide alternatives to that. So that's exactly what Linda and I do. When we go into the community, we take time to figure out who are their connections, who are their support mertners, who are the community partners they're already connected with, and how can we bring them into the picture to avoid a hospitalization if possible. So this data right here shows that that is something that's happening, not only with the clinicians, but this also shows the data from police officers. So not only are we helping, but police are actually 5150-ing less as well. To also kind of back up that data, 5150s, like, well, maybe calls for service are going down. So we looked at that as well, from the same exact timeframe, and we actually see that there's been an 11% increase in the types of calls that the clinicians go to in San Mateo. And so though the calls for service are going up and people are still calling 911 for mental health crisis, we are definitely seeing that the community is getting the resources that they so very much need. Other ways that we measure success would be stories. So tonight, I just brought a really quick story to share with everyone here on the impact that a program like this can have in a community like San Mateo. So I was working with a family and they had a 27-year-old male living with them. He had severe mental health. He had been declining for about a year before the parents felt comfortable calling 911 for help because they didn't know where else to turn. He had no community services he was connected with, no medication, and no 5150s in his history. After multiple calls for service to the home, we were able to work and get him placed on a hold so he could stabilize in the hospital. But because of the follow-up, I was actually able to make a referral to a program called FAST here in the community, and they went out to the home, met with the families who were Spanish-speaking, and provided them services while the client was in the hospital so that they knew what to do when he was released and they can make a safety plan for themselves. Unfortunately, he was released home, what I would consider too early, and he continued to decompensate in the home. We were out again and unfortunately had to 5150 again at that time. However, we were able to provide the family with additional support with the clinician program and FAST, and in doing that, we were able to actually give them the strength to do the next steps with what they needed to do. One of those things unfortunately, including removing him from the home for the meantime through restraining order, which actually ended up empowering him to receive services. So now currently, he is receiving services at a crisis stabilization house, and he's actually doing really well. He was able to get his shot on time. He's motivated for treatment because he really wants to be reconnected with family, and that's probably one of the greatest success stories I've seen this year, the quick turnaround of three months, if you could believe it. And then the quote on here really is encompassing of the situation is, "We're an asset to the police department because we're not there to just solve the problem that day. We're there to help keep the problem solved for long term," and I think that's a huge testament to it. I can't talk about this program without talking about the Gardner Center. Again, research is important to keep programs like this going, and the Gardner Center has been with us from day one. They were a huge part of getting the program going, and the evaluations they're continuing to do are going to show the community why programs like this can be successful. Some short-term outcomes they have is improved cross-section collaboration that optimizes response to individuals experiencing crisis, improved community utilization of mental health services, and again, like I mentioned early, reduced strain on emergency systems and services. Their final report's supposed to come towards the end of this year, so keep an eye out for it. Before we get to the end of our presentation, I wanted to point out that we do have a dashboard on the San Mateo Police Department website where we outline the types of calls that San Mateo Police Department and the clinicians answer to when it comes to welfare checks, people who are being 5150s. So if you're interested in looking at the data, age, housing status, city that they live in, times of days we go to calls, things like that, you can find all of that on the San Mateo Police Department's website. And last but not least, the future. We would love to see more clinicians covering more hours in the day. Me and Linda work 40 hours and that is it. So we would love to see growth in that aspect of the program, and we're starting to see it as we see adding Linda in and then also other cities kind of jumping on board with the program. And then we'd also love to see the ongoing training. So being here for the last two years, I've been able to provide a lot of what we call lineup training, so daily trainings through to the police department, but also more official trainings as well to support them with their knowledge of how to assess for mental health and ways to get people the support that they need. We also want to see a decrease in individuals who utilize the system more than the average person. So that brief intense case management that Linda was talking about earlier and using that to really connect people to services long-term, so they're not calling 911 or going to the psychiatric emergency room over and over, so really helping adjust that revolving door that we see in our community. And then as Linda mentioned lastly, our partnerships. So we are employees of Star Vista, however, we are embedded in our police departments and we partner with Behavioral Health and Recovery and the John Garner for the research piece. And thank you all for taking the time to listen to us talk about the program today.
If I could, I would stand up and applaud, but I'm not supposed to do that in city council meetings. But thank you both so much. And why don't we open it up to public comment before we bring it back to council?
So that is item number 10 on the agenda. If you wish to speak on this item, if you're attending via Zoom, please raise your hand now, we'll give you a second to do so. Madam Mayor, I have no request to speak on this item.
All right, thank you. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to our council who would like to start us off. Councilmember Hedges.
I really don't have many questions to ask. You covered it. I just so much pride in my city and in you guys for what you're doing. And I understand there's a certain amount of danger in that, but you're doing well with it. I was wondering, I do have one question, is it possible that alcohol is making some of these events worse for people? Do you see that sometimes there's alcohol involved in it, people who have mental illness? I think it'd make it worse.
I think there's a number of factors that go into each call that we go to, but I think, yes, we've been to calls where alcohol is a factor in the call for service that we're on. But again, it's, I think it depends on the person.
Who else? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you to the mayor. Thank you both for your presentation and for being here tonight. I got the sense from your presentation that this, I may be able to intuit the answer, but I may as well ask it. I appreciate you sharing some of the data, and particularly a decrease in 5150s despite an increase in call volume. Is it fair to say, do we have data, like perhaps in the PD database, that points like to a correlation of the idea that your work is reducing the number of individuals who are subject to multiple 5150s and that being, you know, would you say that's the primary cause of the drop? Or can you maybe give me a sense of other ways in which 5150s are dropping as a result of this pilot?
Yeah, absolutely. I do think that there could be a multitude of reasons, right, in terms of what we're doing with the community, and I think it's safe to say one of them could be the amount of individuals that we're encountering and kind of limiting that, those 5150s that used to happen possibly. We don't have specific data on each of these individuals that kind of utilize the system more than others at this time, but it's definitely something we've actually been communicating with since putting this presentation together, actually, so hopefully in the future.
And if I could just dovetail onto that, that one of the issues that we recognized as we stood this program up is the limitations that police officers have in dealing with 5150-related calls. We have, police officers by statute have the authority to place somebody on a 5150 hold, but that's all we have the authority to do. So when police officers go out and they, and somebody meets one of the three criteria, danger to themselves, to others, or gravely disabled, we simply fill out a form, call for an ambulance, and then we go on to the next call. What we, what we experienced was we were out to the same addresses over and over again. The short-term impact that we saw with, when Brianna came on is her ability to follow-up with those individuals and their loved ones or caregivers or family members resulted in us not going, not having to go out to those addresses again. So I think that that's kind of a qualitative rather than a quantitative response. The biggest challenge that we have from a quantitative perspective is, and what they measured towards the end of their present, or what they described towards the end of the presentation was trying to establish measurables for those calls that we're not responding to a clinician with. So there are some calls that are very apparent that there's a mental health component right away, and they, and they recognize that as they monitor the radio or a dispatch to a call. But there are also those calls that there's no forewarning that there's a mental health component, and police officers arrive on scene and then, and then realize once they're on scene that there's a mental health issue and then summon a clinician to the scene. Those are calls that are hard to measure when, when we don't have, I mean, 40 hours is a very limited portion of the week. So that's our, that's our biggest gap in trying to identify what we're not doing and what we could, where we could be doing more. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of the, the perspective that we see.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the District Two Strategic Plan Meeting last week at the library, in which Supervisor Corso unveiled a strategic plan for the district, including San Mateo, Belmont, and Foster City. And a number of priorities were brought out through a survey process there, one of which was an interest in safety, and there was talk about a county mobile unarmed response that would be unveiled soon. And I guess I was just curious whether you will be taking part in that or what the relationship might be between that county effort and what?
I'm going to jump in on that. I'm actually in the working group for that effort. The Mobile Crisis Response Team is mandated by law. Each county in the state is required to have an unarmed crisis response unit, and that's the effort that the county is working on. We are, we are supportive of that effort. If it'll reduce our calls for service, we are happy about that. And, and so we are very supportive of that effort. And I, again, I, I meet regularly with those who are establishing that program. There's supposed to be a soft launch on May 20th, which, so it's coming very, very soon. However, the calls for service that that group will respond to will be, what we believe will be much different than the calls for service that our clinicians respond to. The majority of the, the calls for service that our clinicians respond to have a public safety component, meaning there's immediate, there's an immediate need, that they're calling for a police officer or medical personnel and they need those folks right away. Whereas for the Mobile Crisis Response Unit, those folks are going to be trying to, we're going to try to steer those folks towards 988 rather than 911, and they can expect an unarmed clinician or two, or whatever the model looks like, within a couple hours. So it's a little bit of a different model. I, we, I think inevitably, there's going to be some communication amongst the unarmed unit that is responding to different types of calls and those clinicians who are working within police departments because they may run across some of the same individuals. But the model is, I think, and the mission is, is much different.
Excellent, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Lee.
It's great to see you both here, and, and I, I'm so grateful for your efforts, and, and also I want to acknowledge the chief who pioneered this effort in the county, was one of the leading voices. And so to our credit, we made a good choice with you. I, I guess I wanted to ask, you know, you made it very explicit that there's a desire to have more, you know, more service hours covered, and, and I just was hoping you could kind of speak to the gap in, in the current schedule that, and where you feel like there is the greatest need, because this is a great opportunity for you to plant seeds for future council priorities, for example. And it helps for us to have a sense of, you know, I know we're proactively going after grants and we're, and we're exploring collaborations and all of those things, but to help quantify the need and the stuff, the stopping gap would be valuable in this conversation.
I think, so from my perspective, and, but from my perspective, I think it would be, I mean, most businesses are open right 9 to 5. And so right now, we're filling that gap of when services are open, we are available. I think it would be helpful to have those, those later in the evening or earlier in the morning times filled as well, so that we do have people who, you know, crisis doesn't stop at 5. And so just kind of acknowledging that, you know, seven days a week and covering a little bit more in the evening, a little more in the day would be ideal. As I said, you know, I work, for me, I work, you know, Monday through Thursday, and so it would be nice, thank goodness for Linda. She helps out with those days that I'm not there. And so that'd be my perspective.
And just a couple things to follow up. We do want to be realistic. I mean, we don't want to ask for things that we don't need, and we don't envision that there's a 24-hour need. But I do, I think the, the days of the week are sometimes more important than the hours of the day. Seven-day-a-week coverage is the ultimate goal. Instead of 10 hours, I do think that between 12 and 16 is, is appropriate, and we recognize that these are expensive endeavors, and we, we do have grants submitted with the, with the federal government as of eight days ago. So if you have any, if you know anybody that you want to call or pass along, we, that would be a boon for us because we did, we did have some very specific asks, including embedding a clinician within our homeless outreach team. Because one of the fears that all of the initial four cities recognize is that we, we recognize that having a mental health clinician, given the issues that we're dealing with, with, with our homeless populations, is that it could be kind of swallowed up in that, in that arena because there's such a need there, and we, we've made a conscious effort while Brianna still serves to support that, that population, that we want to make our clinicians available to all our communities within the city. So we're crossing our fingers, we do have some pretty exciting grant applications in that, that may help us do a lot more in this area.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do. It's, it's a, it's a point of pride for the city of San Mateo to have such a great and effective program, and the stats speak for themselves, so keep it up. Just to kind of expand upon Councilmember Lee's question, is there a time of day right now, or is there a day of the week that you're seeing that we don't have you guys available that would make sense? I mean, have we, are we tracking numbers like, is, do we see spikes on Friday or Saturday nights and we don't have clinicians? Do we, are we tracking that information or do we know?
I don't mean to keep answering these questions, I just, I was very, I was very involved in this program, so I kind of know. For what's happening today, I, I would, I would yield to Brianna, she'd probably have the best handle on it. I will tell you that when we talked about Brianna's schedule, we looked at calls for service in order to determine that schedule, and we fully anticipated that this would be a difficult conversation with her, assuming that she'd have like Tuesdays and Wednesdays off. The reality is, is that our greatest need is during the five-day work week, we, our, our calls on the weekends, at least at the time of implementation, were far less than what we saw Monday through Friday. So the schedule is, has been customized to the need, or it was at the time of implementation, and that was based, all based on data.
Great, thank you, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
And let me add my thanks as well. I guess in addition to the questions, there are a couple things. Number one, when this program first started, I heard from a lot of the San Mateo police officers, they were interested. This sounded intellectually good, but they didn't really know. Now, they are your biggest fans. So that may not be quantitative data, but that is absolute qualitative data, and you're biggest advocates. And the other area is fellow council members in other cities. When they, as Deputy Mayor Newsom says, when we go to our council city dinners at the end of the month, they say, how did that happen in San Mateo? We want it too. And particularly the ones in Foster City are now so thrilled that you have joined because they're like, okay. But it, it really just demonstrates an endemic need and we all recognize it, and I, I'm And I, my question is, how, what have you learned in your experiences, either here in San Mateo, or Linda, with your professional experience as well, that has surprised you about what you're doing?
For me, it would be, I think, piggybacking off what you said, how happy the officers are to have us there. I, too, was, I was a little nervous. I wasn't sure, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't really sure, and, and I definitely feel like I'm a part of the San Mateo Police Department. I don't think I've had one instance where I haven't felt safe with the police department. And so that's been a really great surprise, and just to see how willing they are to try new things, learn new resources. I'll come in from a weekend off, and they'll say, hey, I just wanna talk to you about this. I didn't 5150 them, but I just wanna make sure. And so I think their willingness to, like, try something new and seeing how helpful this program is, it's been a really, really, really great surprise.
Yeah.
So for me, I'll piggyback on, you know, what she just said, but I think for me, the biggest surprise was the need. You know, we see the homeless people, we see, you know, all of that that's out there, but there's so much, I call it hidden mental illness, where families try to take care of their loved ones on their own until something explodes or whatever. But I think that was it for me, to see the hidden need.
Well, then, thank you to both of you, and, and also to the chief for bringing your passions, and the entire police department for embracing you. So, are there comments that anyone else wishes to make before we close on? No, well, then we will say thank you very much for your time, and please, go ye forth and be as wonderful as you have been, and thank you for walking the Walk of Mental Health Awareness Month. We all say this is important, but you are doing it every day, and we are very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Uh-huh. Now our city attorney is coming on. Oh, great. Thank you. Okay. Well, then let us proceed to item number 11, which is a public hearing on the charter amendments. And our city attorney is going to share the information with us.
This is the second of two. It's a very loud microphone. Thank you. So this is the second of the two required public hearings for charter amendments. You will, you have heard all this information before. There are no changes to the proposed text of the charter amendments since the last meeting. I'm gonna go through this quickly, in light of the hour, and the fact that you've heard this all before. For this first slide, it reflects proposed changes to filling council vacancies, and it expands the time from 30 to 60 days. And also, as you well know, the proposal is to change the power of the mayor to fill a vacancy, and instead, to call for a special election if the city council doesn't act within 60 days. One thing I'll just add, too, is I'm repeating this information, too, because it's a public hearing. Not everyone will have necessarily heard what happened at the first public hearing. So thank you for bearing with me. Okay, this is additional, these are additional changes on the topic of filling council vacancies. And now that you're in a district election-based system, the last sentence is no longer needed, because that addressed situations where you had members running for, there were more than one seat, and then the candidate receiving the most votes would then serve the longer of the unexpired terms. But that's not going to happen in a district election-based situation. One is only running for one seat as a candidate. And then with respect to mayoral rotation, again, this would require the council to then act at the first regular meeting in December, not continue the matter unless certain circumstances arise. There's some disaster-type situation, or there's a unanimous vote at the council, and that provides, provides for some flexibility, where we may not anticipate everything that might happen in the future that would make continuation sensible under the circumstances. So there's some flexibility built in, but again, would require unanimous vote. This is actually all new text. I didn't wanna bold it, because then it makes it harder to read. But the basic idea is it makes the mayoral rotation process more ministerial in nature. It requires to follow a sequence specified by ordinance. The first person in line is selected as mayor, shall be selected as mayor, and the second person shall be selected as deputy mayor. I won't repeat what's, what's remaining on the slide, but again, the idea is to make it a ministerial process, whereas now it's a purely discretionary process. And then lastly, on the same topic, because it's in the same section, but just slightly different issue, namely, the council meetings cannot start any earlier than 6:30 PM. That's language that's in the charter. And that was changed in 2002. I think before 2002, it used to say no earlier than 8:00 PM, I believe. And then that was changed. I think a good practice would be not specify a time in the charter at all, because council meetings can sometimes get rather lengthy. Okay, and then Board of Commission qualifications. So currently, as you know, Board and Commission members must have the same qualifications as members of the council, meaning they have to be U.S. citizens over 18, have to be electors. This would make a change to that Board and Commission members need not be U.S. citizens. They would have to still be 18 years of age, but would still need to be a resident of the city, and this is also consistent with state law that I've mentioned in prior presentations, is also mentioned in the staff report. Now, what I've described so far are changes that could potentially go into one ballot measure that could go before the voters, and now the remaining changes are revisions that could go potentially into a separate ballot measure that go before the voters. I think what you'll hear next are changes that are more, either required to comply with state law, or, or no longer needed. They sort of fall into the category of cleanup changes. So this one simply reflects that we no longer have elections at large, rather they're now conducted by district. Also, I think sensibly reflects that special elections or appointments to fill the vacancy would also be by district. And then also refers to the federal requirement for a federal decennial census, and then at that time is when district boundaries would be redrawn, so that districts comply with federal and state law. And then for council members elected in 2017, you may recall SB 415, that required realigning our elections from odd-numbered years to even-numbered years, and this led to an extension of the terms of council members from four years to five years. But the terms of those members are now complete. So that language that was only relatively recently added to the charter just really is no longer needed, because going forward, we're in even-numbered year increments, and each of the terms of council members are now four years. So this is outdated language at this point, just, just barely. And then for urgency ordinances, this is, I think, I would view this as cleanup change, where it would allow for the publication of a summary of an urgency ordinance, which is minor, but if we're going to make other changes, I think this is a good cleanup revision. And then also importantly, the, an urgency ordinance, if this were to go to the voters and be approved, it would not be automatically repealed as of the 91st day. Instead, the council could then affirmatively repeal the urgency ordinance when the emergency was no longer in existence, because emergencies can, after all, last for longer than, than 90 days. These are other revisions to repeal language, those part of the original 1922 charter. It is quite lengthy, it is in the staff report. Elections are conducted differently than they were in 1922. So the language here, as you indicated on the slide, is summarized on the slide, really isn't needed anymore. And that's it for the changes. There are other even more minor changes that are explained in the staff report, making more general neutral language, and cleaning up typographical errors and the like. So this is the schedule that we're on. We had a number of study sessions. This is the second of two legally required public hearings under the charter amendment process in state law. Currently, on June 3rd, the council could submit a measure or measures to the voters. The deadline is 88 days before the election under state law and the Elections Code. That is August 9th, but we also wanna build in a buffer in case, for example, item were to get continued, or, you know, we also wanna provide plenty of notice to the county elections office, who would be in charge of the consolidated election. So I think there's logistical reasons for doing this a little bit early. And then lastly, this is the same slide as last time. This is an open question as to how many measures to put on the ballot. So on May 20th, that will, there will be an agenda item to go over some of the polling results. And I think at that time is when we, as staff, are going to ask the council, which measures do you want to see going on the ballot? Now, Measure Y is not on the agenda tonight, I only mentioned this in passing, but this is referred to in our housing element, so I think there's a certain prioritization for having an amendment to Measure Y, subject, of course, to council approval, but to have voters weigh in on that question. I think there's a direct connection between that and the, and the housing element, as has been discussed previously. But if you have that, and then two other charter measures, charter ballot measures, there, that's three measures before the voters, that's, that's a significant number for consideration at the May 20th meeting. So more to come on that issue. So again, no action tonight for, that we're requesting of the city council, no changes in the text since the last public hearing. And I think at this point, my presentation is now completed.
Thank you very much again. Thank you very much again. And city clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one request to speak on this item. If you would like to speak on item number 11, and you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. No, I'll give you a moment to do so. Madam Mayor, we have one request to speak, and that is Dave Cohen.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening again, Dave Cohen, at the San Mateo. Light and airy. We are quite encouraged to see the charter amendments being proposed that will clear up some ambiguities, maybe let, like, make life easier for everyone in the city, as well as all of you. Thank you. One comment we'd like to make, though. Again, very much appreciative that this body is now considering strengthening the code of conduct, putting ethical standards in place, the studies that you're going to be conducting with an outside consult expert. We, you know, absolutely know that we don't wanna hold up the possible schedule on this, and it's impossible, probably, to get anything into the works that could go to the voters on November of this year. However, it sure would be nice if there was something we could do, or that you could do, to accelerate some of these processes, to be able to get something on a measure for a charter amendment, to be able to move forward with some of the things that might be required to have a charter change. Again, this is moonshot, understood, but we're very, very concerned that if things get slow-rolled, even 2026 will become a problem on schedule. Again, I'm sure there's more than one way to get some of the changes in, that are gonna be made, to have code of conduct, ethical standards enforceable with penalties for willful violations. Maybe it will, and maybe it won't take a charter change, but please, consider what we can do together to bring forward some changes that we've talked about time and time again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes public comment.
Okay, let me close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One quick question, persona. If council were to make a decision, for example, to potentially postpone the cleanup language charter amendment pieces to 2026, or if it were to make it onto the ballot but not be approved by the voters, could you speak to any issues that might present for the city council, or procedures that are currently being edited? Would it affect the 2026 election at all?
Not sure that's entirely a legal question, but in terms of, say, just if a ballot measure, a charter amendment ballot, ballot measure fails, you know, then we have to come back to the council and say, well, that, that didn't pass, and, you know, try and explore why, and then get council direction as to what to do, whether to try again at the next election, whether to wait, whether to change the proposed text for the charter amendment. You know, we, we would present options to the council and, and take direction. You know, I think there's, on the timing question, if you were to go back to council, I mean, go back to the voters immediately, you know, there, there could be a bit of a charter amendment fatigue, if you keep going back to the voters, you know, one election after the other. But that's, there, there are, I think, more than legal considerations at play there.
I think just to add on, right now, we've conducted a survey, and there's two questions specifically on the charter amendments and the media items that are here. And so we'll be at the May 20th meeting. It'll be really helpful to get that survey result, and that could actually help inform the city council as to how you wanna maneuver and work, work through placing on a ballot, or even what is within the actual measures of what you just saw this evening here, too, because there could be at play of just where, where voters might be, and see what, maybe take that under consideration as well.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, I think Councilmember Lee mentioned first.
Well, I appreciate Councilmember Lorraine's question. I mean, we're, in terms of the, the sort of required cleanup language, we're, we're already operating in compliance with, you know, having converted to district, right? So, so there's a negligible chance that, that there will be significant consequences. We're already operating outside of the, the existing charter. So, so I appreciate that point. And, and I will say, you know, again, being the senior in the room and playing the long game, right? When I was, when I was pushing for the, the tax reform measure, Measure CC, I was planning that three years before, before it came on the ballot. There's already discussions about what should be on the ballot in '26. We should be thinking about what we're going to be putting on the ballot in 26. We should be thinking about what we're going to be putting on the ballot in 26. We've been talking about significant gaps in our capital improvement projects and our capital improvement funds and, and significant facility needs, right? And there, there may be needs that, that we won't be able to get to without going to voters. And so I, I will say that, just from a strategic standpoint, because it's not a legal question, from a strategic standpoint, and we'll have much more information on this when we have polling data to work with, but always, there's a lot of, of competition for voters' attention every single election year. It's going to be the county running a measure. It's going to be the school district running a measure, right? It's going to be potentially us putting another ballot measure on in 26. And so this is, there's always going to be a need to jump into the, the, the jump rope and, and time ourselves, knowing that, that there's a lot of moving parts that we don't have control over. But wait and see, and wait and see means it doesn't get done. So know that. Know that if we take a wait and see approach and we hope for some, some turn that every, you know, the stars are going to align and we're not going to have any competition in 2026, I can tell you that day won't come. It hasn't come. There's always going to be other ballot measures and other cities and other jurisdictions going forward and going forward and not waiting their turn. So, so our, our community is counting on us to show leadership and action. And, and so I'll say that, you know, my, my strong position is that we move forward with the charter amendments. And, and I think that, you know, Councilmember Hedges can speak to the, the comprehensive charter reform that he was part of years ago, you know, they didn't, they didn't break up that measure. They did it in one follow swoop. So there's clear precedent and models for, for comprehensive charter reform that don't, that don't break it up. And given the fact that we actually, there's virtually no, no downside from my perspective in terms of like the legal liability that should be weighed in, in the, the cleanup measure coming now or coming later, it doesn't, it, it's, it strikes me as sort of a moot point, honestly. So, so that's where I'm leaning. Obviously, we need to have more, more information and data in front of us with polling, but I, you know, I want to plant that seed with my council colleagues that, you know, telling, telling ourselves that our turn will come in 26 is myopic and, and short sighted. And we can't be looking at this in a silo. We have to know, you know, from the budget standpoint and from the facilities need standpoint, that there's going to be other needs that we have to consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and I'm, I'm still trying to understand why bifurcating it and having part of it on the ballot in '24 and the rest of it on '26 is different than, because I, than running it all now or all in '26. Because for the life of me, I can't see how the half, the, the second half of, of the cleanup part isn't any more controversial than the first half. If I'm missing something, please let me know.
Well, the thinking was in dividing it up, that the way that we've proposed it to date is that the, some of the changes, such as filling a vacancy, deciding how the mayor is elected, would be more attention getting versus other changes that simply reflect, reflect changes to district elections and removing outdated language. And if you have two measures, like one is more attention getting or controversial or however you want to put it, and one is more run-of-the-mill, you, by combining them, you risk the entire measure not succeeding. Whereas if you divide them up, you give the one measure that is more of a cleanup measure a greater chance of success. Now, having said that, there's different ways of approaching it, of dividing it up between, you know, one now and one in '26, both now, both in '26. I mean, that, that, that's a question, again, that we'll revisit at the May 20th council meeting.
I think having that data from the survey is going to be really helpful to make an informed decision as a council and how you want to move forward. Just speaking of going through an experience just two years ago with, it's pretty much the same of what this council is considering right now at a city six miles down the freeway from here, one passed and one failed. And the one that was just to clean up passed, the one that was more controversial failed. So it was, you know, it was all part of the polling, though, and understanding the process, too, of that. And just speaking of experience, doesn't mean it's San Mateo, but just giving an experience.
Thank you.
So I find it in my heart, I can see how it would be, how to find changing the way we select the mayor controversial. So I've been around here a long time, and with Gummager and others, I know how many hard feelings, and Gummager's still alive, and he's still not happy about what happened to him when he was passed over as mayor. So, and it creates an air on the council that's not healthy. And so I've been pushing this idea for a long time. I'm just now in a position to do something about it.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions?
Couple of questions. To the city manager, just to be sure, so one of the things that they're going to bring us the data back for is presenting this as one versus two amendments? That's one of the things they're pulling?
No, actually, what they're pulling for is the actual material of what we're looking at. So the mayoral rotation policy, this, the policy that we're actually doing right now is one of the questions. And then there was a, the other question was, was it the vacancy person? I'm trying to remember what we had. I think it was the vacancy question.
Oh, no, what?
No, it was the commissions.
No, it was all related to, I think, the selection of the mayor, the, the process.
The two different, the two different.
Two different elements.
Elements, okay.
It was continuation and then making it ministerial. Those were the two questions.
Yeah, so that's what we'll get more data on.
So we exist, we're working as charter, or as a district city already. So the cleanup ones, even if they failed, what would then happen?
Well, we're operating in conformance with state law because of the California Voting Rights Act. But, you know, the charter should still be reflective of our current elections process, and right now it's not. So I think it's just important to get it aligned with our, with our current practices.
Understood. I'm just trying to qualify, like, if they were as one, one, you know, ballot measure as opposed to two, and they, they would either both pass or both fail if there were one measure, what would be the fallout to them, you know, if they were combined, all, you know, failing?
Well, I mean, it means the charter is the status quo. I mean, when it comes to, like, picking the mayor and filling a vacancy, I mean, it's, the charter as it exists currently, and then with respect to district elections, I mean, that would need to be changed at some point. And I think if a combined measure were to fail, that may be a lesson in that regard, that, well, a standalone measure, which would, which needs to be, the language needs to be fixed.
Sure.
And a standalone measure may have more chance of success, as the city manager mentioned, which I'm glad he mentioned that, because that was also exactly one of the reasons why, you know, we were proposing it the way that we did, was based on that direct experience.
Okay. And I guess, just more of a for information question, when, when does the census data affect districting? So it says every 10 years, I think, but when is that next cycle?
It's going to be 2030, actually. So once we get that, then it's a really quick turnaround that we have to get going for the 2032 election. And so it's quite a heavy lift. Luckily, it's not like what the city had to do previously here, because they had to do this, you only used for, I think, one election, the first map, and then you had to go do a whole nother revamp.
Well, no, not exactly. I mean, so what, what happened was, you know, we got the CVRE letter, and just briefly, since this is not on the agenda, but it's related. We got the CVRE letter, and then we had a very tight timeline to actually transition to district elections, do community outreach, hold public meetings, have a map, you know, hire demographer, multiple maps, and then also wait for actual census data to come from the Census Bureau, because this was in 2021. And the census data was coming out, I think it was like late summer, early fall, and it was right around the time that we were transitioning. So it was the transition to the, under the CVRA, it's already very tight, but it was made even more challenging because of the timing of the release of the data from the U.S. Census Bureau. Now, in 2030, that's when the census is conducted, and then the data actually comes out much later. And then after that data is provided, that's when the districts would be redrawn for the 2032 election, as the city manager pointed out. Still a tight timeline, not, not quite as tight as it was in 2021.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes. I just wanted to point out that I think we got the letter two weeks after we hired Prasanna. So it was, it was quite a welcome.
Turned by fire.
It was actually one week.
Okay.
You will never forget that. Okay, do we have any other comments before we close out this item for the evening? I don't think so, so thank you very much, Prasanna. We appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing the discussion on the 20th. All right, so let us move on to public hearing, item number 12, Councilmember Compensation Ordinance Introduction. And the city attorney is going to share the information with us as well.
So thank you once again. So this is a follow-up of council direction we previously received. A public hearing is not technically required, but just in an abundance of transparency caution, we decided to send out a public hearing notice. So this is the question for the council. An ordinance has been written as directed by the council to increase council member compensation from $600 per month to $1,000 a month, starting in January 2025. And I'm going to discuss each of those three components in the next slides. So this is the current language of the city charter. And as you can see, it provides for $600 per month compensation, but then it also says that the compensation can be adjusted in the manner authorized by the general laws of the state for general law cities. So what does this mean? This means that you can adjust compensation and rely on state law without a charter amendment. And this was passed in 2002. And then state law passed in 2023, effective January 1st of this year, SB 329. And what it did was it did several things. It increased the compensation for cities of different sizes. It also provided for a way to increase compensation. I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. But the maximum compensation for cities of this size is $1,900 per month. And then, as I said before, on January 2nd, the council majority directed staff to proceed with increasing compensation to this amount. And this direction was in connection with a study session, yet another study session on the city charter, but we combined both into, into one council item, as you might recall. Okay, so another, some additional components for SB 329, automatic future increases are prohibited. So what this means is that in order to increase compensation, if, say, the council were to afford with $1,000 a month, you, you could not have, say, a CPI increase automatically built into the ordinance. You need to come back each and every time to adjust the compensation. And also under state law, the, an increase cannot affect the members' compensation during their term, current term of office, except where a new council member is elected or a new term of office is begun for a member of the council. So in November of '24, there will be an election for two seats. So that is a qualifying event to allow for an increase in compensation, but it cannot take effect until after that election. Election gets certified in December, and what we thought was a nice, clean way of having an increased compensation would be in January of '25. We picked the date January 6th because that's the first, the first day of the first full pay period of 2025. Technically, you could do it in, have it be effective in December of 2024, but this was the approach we, we chose to take. I don't think it makes a great deal of difference either way. And that ends my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much again. City clerk, is there any public comment?
Madam Mayor, I have no request to speak on this item.
All right, well, let me bring it back and close public comment. Any comments, questions from city council members? Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. I'll be brief. Through the mayor. Prasanna, could you, I, I believe in, in the, in what's being proposed in our packet, I, I saw some other language about an attorney general decision noting something about, you know, the difference between, like, a 5% increase per year that salaries haven't been adjusted. I, I was curious to know whether that was something additional or like a separate way of possibly considering future changes to compensation. What role does that play in what we're deciding?
Sure. So, no, thank you for asking that question and allowing me to, to clarify. So what the new state law says is, depending on the size of the city, it assigns a compensation level to that city. So for example, and again, for our city, between over $75,000 and up to and including $150,000, the compensation can be up to $1,900 a month. It could be less, but not more than that. And there's different compensation levels for different sized cities. So what the state law says is that the salary of council members can be increased beyond those levels, but, and it would have to be done by an amendment to the ordinance, but the amount cannot exceed the increase of one of two methods, either an inflationary increase starting in January 1, 2024, or just a straight line 5% per year. And, you know, that, that 5% language, I think, was predated SB 329, and there was an attorney general opinion that's explained how you calculate that 5% increase. And what the AG's office said was that it's not compounded, that you don't do 5%, and then total that, and then another 5%. It's a straight line, 5% times the number of years since the last adjustment, then you do the math, and you come out with a number. So, so that's what the attorney general opinion is, was regarding. It's not directly, it doesn't directly speak to this question before the council. The question before the council is, what do you want the compensation level to be? It could be up to and including $1,900 a month, but the direction we, we received was to make it $1,000 a month. So that, that is what is in the ordinance before the council.
Thank you. No other questions.
Okay, great. Do we have any comments before I ask for a motion?
I'll make a comment. When, when we heard this, I think I was in Mexico, and, and so wasn't able to, like, fully participate in the conversation. And, and I've been thinking about some of the things, the points that Councilmember Lorraine had made about asking for a higher amount. And, and it got me thinking about his perspective as the youngest person on the council and the only renter, and, and a person who is working full-time and juggling this job, and a person who maybe one day wants to start a family. And, and he's fought really hard to stay in San Mateo and serve San Mateo. And, and it got me thinking about how we on this council might need to check our privilege, that maybe, maybe $1,900 seems like too much, or we don't need it, but other people might. And it might be a decision to do this. And it might be a decision to do this or not do it, knowing that that decision is a really hard choice to make irrespective of money. So I wasn't intending to reopen this fully, but I felt like, you know, it deserves some more conversation, I think. There's very real equity issues and lack of representation historically and even today, presently, in communities of color, and renters and low-income folks serving on this council, this council in the city of San Mateo. That is a history that we cannot ignore, and that is, you know, that is further illustrated and confirmed when you look at the pipeline of our commissioners, which has gotten more white and more wealthy in the last five years. So as the only person of color, as somebody who cares deeply about having representation that's reflective of our community, knowing how hard it is to do this job, the real price of service and the sacrifices, I would support councilmembers, Lorraine's original suggestion of increasing the amount to $1,200. And I hope councilmembers will join me. I believe that the city of Belmont, which is a tiny fraction of what the city of San Mateo is, has already met that level. Correct me if I'm wrong, Prasanna, but there are other cities in our county, much smaller cities, that have already acted and, I think, shown strong leadership in trying to better align the workload, the goal of increasing access and representation, and acknowledging the inequity and the historical injustices of lack of representation and under-representation in their communities, and how compensation can and does change that.
So if I can jump in here, Councilmember Lee, you may be thinking of the city of San Carlos that just adjusted their compensation.
Oh, maybe.
And they adjusted it in January to take effect, as required by state law, only after the next election. And so this is a slide I had prepared, thinking this might come up. So for San Carlos, this change has not gone into effect yet, so that's only in effect as of the end of the year. And then you'll see, this is not in a complete list of all cities, it's a sampling, but you can see that currently, you know, South San Francisco is at $1,000 a month. And Daly City, as I had mentioned previously, they had made a series of changes in accordance. You know, you can go back and you can do your 5% increases, and they had a series of increases, I think it was in the '80s, which leads to kind of the figure they have now.
Prasanna, may I interrupt? What I think is missing in this chart is that it doesn't show the population and the threshold of eligible increases. Because to compare ourselves to San Carlos or Burlingame, which is a tiny fraction, a fifth of the size of our city, they have a different range. And I, you know, I believe that they're probably closer to, you know, the top end of that range. And so I want to, you know, broaden and contextualize this, you know, this slide, because I think that it would be really helpful to look at, you know, what was the eligible increase and where did they land?
So I don't have a list of all of the population amounts, although I believe San Carlos is in the range of like up to 30, like not quite 35,000 people. And there, the maximum increase under state law is what they adjusted it to.
Right.
So it was $950 a month.
So that's exactly my point, is that other smaller cities, smaller cities maxed out at the top end of their eligibility, eligible increase. That's precisely the point I was trying to make. And so I, you know, I'm opening, I want to reopen this because I feel like I didn't have, you know, I just wasn't, I didn't have the presence of mind to fully participate in the conversation remotely when I was on vacation in New Mexico. So I'm here today, and I'm gonna, you know, now is better than never.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yep. So, Prasanna, Daly City is a city of similar population to us, and I think I asked you this last time, but I don't remember what you told me. So I'll ask you again. Does this mean that they're getting $1,102.92 every two weeks, or they're getting half of that twice a month?
I believe it's the former.
Two weeks.
So that means that...
And this was taken from their municipal code.
So that means they're technically over the cap, because that would be giving them $2,204 and change a month, which the cap is at $1,900.
Well, again, like under the state law, one can exceed the cap, but there's a process to do it.
Sure. So that must be why the numbers are weird.
Right. I mean, I think what happened is, I believe that they had gone through that process many years ago, which led to the salary that they're being compensated at today. I will say, like, in this chart, like, San Carlos is the most recent city to have made their change. Other cities have made changes really at different times, so I imagine that some of these cities may be making changes in the near future, but, you know, that remains to be seen. It's really up to the council to decide whether you want to stick with $1,000 or do something else, or, you know, and you can always, if you wanted to, you could introduce this ordinance and then come back another time and say, let's revisit it again in the future, but it's really up to the council to decide.
So San Carlos has a population of like 30 to 35,000, and they're setting their price $50 less than we are. We're the largest city in the county. And when a leader who worked very hard as a renter in our community, as the youngest person on council, said, I think at a very bare minimum, we should be considering $1,200, this is when we listen to lived experience. We own our homes. We don't want to price out, we don't want to be part of pricing out future generations of leadership. And, you know, $200 a month is not, you know, it's the bare minimum that we can do, honestly.
So I hear two councilmembers. Is there any interest?
Councilmember Hedges has a comment.
Okay.
So this is no way, shape, or form ever going to affect me. So I was okay with $1,000. I think that the way it shapes up now, we're certainly below the median, as we like to talk about. I'm a little nervous about $1,200. I can see the letters of the editor, the city council doubled their salary without any other explanation. I'll put it this way, I'm okay with either one. So I'm okay, I can move on to $1,000, or I can wait and see if there's a third, but I'm not going to be the third, but I'm okay with either one.
Well, I guess I'll weigh in then and say that while I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Lee has made in the original discussion we had, that Councilmember Lorraine had suggested, I think we've gone fairly far down this process, and I think the dollar-wise, there's not a lot of difference between $1,000 and $1,200, but in terms of what we've said we're going to do for the community, I would recommend we stay with $1,000, and then we can always, as the city attorney said, revisit it in a year. But that we're fairly far down the path, and it's a fairly well-known recommendation. So I would recommend staying with $1,000. So other thoughts?
Well, I'm conflicted because, you know, we have two new people that'll be coming on board, both also, you know, potentially younger as well, and, you know, that $200 a month does make a difference. And it makes a difference, not just to people who are renting, it makes a difference to people who are buying their house for the next 30 years. But I think what we were really weighing on was the optics of it. We settled on $1,000 instead of $1,200 for the very reason that Councilmember Hedges just said, which was, we didn't want to look as though we were doubling it. And we basically had the idea of that we would just come back again the following year and do it again. So that's how we got there, and I'm comfortable either way.
I think so. Councilmember Lorraine?
Well, I appreciate the comments tonight. You know, I, too, am comfortable either way, because...
It doesn't work.
You know, I think that, you know, I think Councilmember Lee, you know, accurately gave a sense of where I was coming from with what I had to say. I think it was heard last time. I was thinking of more than just myself, of course, because, you know, the difference between $1,000 and $1,200 is not going to make a significant impact on my salary. But, you know, the idea was that it may impact the decisions of others. And certainly, when I, I think, since getting onto council, I've gained a vast appreciation for what it means to receive this compensation. And personally, I'm interested in increasing it now or next time. I think, yeah, I'm a little loath to reopen the conversation if others are also loath to reopen it. But except for perhaps, you know, coming back to this at a later date, not too late, right? Not 20 years, as we waited last time. I'm not sure how I feel about coming back to it next year. I think if we're thinking about doing it next year, we may as well do it now. But I'll stop.
May I?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
So I think that this is, there's, from my perspective, there's a strong reason to do it now, because this is an election year, and it could actually, it could make that difference to potential candidates to get in, right? And so I think it has a much more impactful effect this year than it would next year. And I think, you know, managing the optics is not a reason to narrow the field. You know, we're always in the process of managing optics, and I think that this is an increase that's well justified, that opens more doors, that makes us a healthier, potentially a healthier democracy. And just in terms of revisiting, you know, the fee structure, from my perspective, I think that it would be wise to actually schedule this to be revisited on an annual basis as part of, you know, something, one of those standing review items that we do. And, you know, like, one of my council priorities was to set a review schedule for the election process, right, and consider campaign reforms. Those are things that I would love us to entertain so that there are clear markers moving forward and when this gets discussed again. And obviously, like, if there's not, you know, if there's not sufficient will on the council to reopen this, to, you know, to $1,200 for whatever reason, you know, which I disagree with, then that's fine. But I do think that it is, it is, it makes a lot of sense to say, this is a question that the council should review and determine on a regular basis, just like we do with every employee in bargaining unit.
If I can jump in here for a moment, if you wanted to, what you could do is, you could introduce this ordinance, and then, as part of your motion, direct staff to bring the item back to council at a future date. I'll look at the city manager as well to see if he wants to chime in for, to revisit the question. I just want to remind the council, though, that any future amendment to the compensation would only take effect after the following election, 2026. So we can revisit it in a year, or maybe in two years, that's fine, but a change in compensation after November 2024 would only go into effect after the next municipal election.
So that was going to be my question, because, yes, this year is an election year, but if we made a change after this year, we'd have to wait to the next election year anyhow. Is that correct? Okay.
So I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Hedges.
So this is already prepared, the ordinance. So it seems to me that a simple change, if I would say, I'm introducing an ordinance to increase the council member's compensation from $600 to $1,200, it would mechanically change the number from $1,000 to $1,200, and we wouldn't have to revisit this.
Oh, sure. No, it's easy to change the number. I mean, you could just...
We can decide tonight to change the number.
You could do it on this...
Absolutely.
That's what I'm getting at.
It's just delete the zero added to.
Right. You could change the number. This is just a question for the council as to what you are comfortable with. Do you want to revisit the question now, or do you want to stick with prior direction and revisit it later? Like, legally, there's no wrong answer. It's just a question for the council, what do you want to do?
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I am making a motion to increase, ordinance increasing the council member's compensation from $600 to $1,200 per month, starting in January 2025.
Second.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lorraine.
Could I just ask if there might be an opportunity to bring this back to the public? Allow for a public comment on this change?
We had no comment on the previous.
It would be reread, though, again, right?
It would. There'd be a second reading.
It would come back for a second reading. The second readings are not presentation items, they're not public hearings, so, you know, it's a little bit of a different flavor to the, when it would come back at the next council meeting. So it's really up to the council as to how to proceed tonight, whether to proceed tonight.
But it could be pulled and discussed.
Or you can just give me direction, and I just put it as a regularly heard item rather than consent, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to, it could be a presentation item if you wish.
Well, we got a first, we got a motion and a second.
You have a motion and a second to...
Call for a vote.
...alter what's prepared and to increase compensation from $600 to $1,200 a month, starting in January 6, 2025.
All right. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Nash?
No, because I believe that we could do what we're doing, and then what I do appreciate is Councilmember Lee's suggestion that we include a regular review of salaries and compensation. That I absolutely support. But at this point, given where we are, I don't support increasing it to $1,200.
Motion carries for one.
Just for clarity on the next agenda, okay, we're just going with consent, or did you want it to be a hearing item?
I would think we should do a hearing item.
I see two.
I think hearing item, yeah.
Okay, got it. We'll list it.
Thank you all. Thank you, city attorney. Okay, let's move on. Our final item on the agenda tonight will be a closed session, which is item 13, Conference with Labor Negotiators. We will first take reports and announcements and move into closed session, and this regular meeting will be adjourned in closed session. So are there any reports and announcements? Councilmember Hedges?
Yes. Before we get into our trip to DC, I don't think labor really ever asks for credit for what they do, but we just had Earth Day, and I doubt if there's anybody on this panel that knows that the people... on this panel that knows that the people that funded Earth, Earth Day was the Auto Workers Union. Their president not only funded it, he bought a 800 number in several parts of the country that could be used to get people out for Earth Day. Walter Ruther was the preeminent liberal in the labor movement, and not only did he do that, and other labor unions did, but he also funded the March on Washington. And I saw my union members' hats, many of them in that march, I unfortunately did not take place with it, but my heart was with it. And if you look at the filming of the, of Dr. King's speech, Walter Ruther was standing right next to him. My own union here in Sematow County feeds hundreds of people a month, both union and non-union people who have hardship, so I just want to say, since I have a podium to do that, that I think we should take some more credit for things that we do, and most of the social stuff we do is just never discussed outside of the labor movement. So that's that for that, and thank you for letting me do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the council if they might be amenable to making, in addition to what we were just discussing, related to what the mayor brought up and others about reviewing council compensation on a regular basis, I, feel free to correct me, City Manager, City Attorney, but could we potentially add to this new public hearing item, a question, if, if enough council members were okay with it, about a cadence for review?
Happy to do that, and as the City Attorney mentioned, that it would take effect, you know, it's two years, so I would say we'd do it kind of the same timeframe of what we just did for this cycle, do the check-in basically in 2026, gearing up for January of 2027, same kind of time, like what we're doing right now.
That sounds like a great idea to me, I concur.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I, I will, I would like to just make one quick announcement in addition, that I had the privilege of attending the Rethink Waste Earth Day event, not exactly on Earth Day, the 22nd, because, you know, there's only one of those, and so many would like to celebrate Earth Day throughout the Earth month, but on Saturday, April 27th, I believe it was, is, is when we had a number of events at the Shoreway Environmental Center in San Carlos. We had plant swaps, we had the opportunity to give people a chance to paint a tile that will go into the new Rethink Waste building in San Carlos, on San Carlos Avenue. It's pretty cool, and we had a tour of the recycling center, lots of youth there, the trash-to-art winners were announced, there was a winner in Sematow from the Kerry School, among others, very cool creations that demonstrated, you know, the importance of finding new ways to use products another time before trying to discard them or even recycle them. And, you know, they had lunch, everyone got free lunch, it was pretty, you know, in, in compostable containers, so I appreciate Recology Sematow County, the county's Sustainability Department, Rethink Waste for hosting a great event for our community.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee, or, nope, Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Well, unfortunately, this past weekend, the bicycle rodeo was postponed due to weather. Do we have an idea of when that's coming back?
I'll have to follow up with staff, but we'll let, we'll let the whole community know.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we get it in the announcement cycle, and that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Okay, then, I think Councilmember Hedges, you have a second announcement.
Yeah, I think there was some progress made last week. Our city manager, Alex, put together a great team with Matt Fabry and Lisa. I decided at the last minute to tag along and just watch the wonders they, they put forth with all of those powerful people in Washington DC, but we met with, we met with Senator Butler's staff, and we discussed earmarks for the Lake Shore childcare improvements and the Marina Lagoon dredging, and found out that Butler's staff expressed her particular interest in childcare and education, and we suggested that the Lake Shore project might be a good fit for her. And we also met with Alex Padilla's staff, and we discussed the importance of earmarks with them, and just want to aside here, I could not understand how earmarks got such a bad name. I understand how it was, because they were added as Christmas tree amendments to non-budgeting bills, but it destroyed earmarks for the budget bills, too, and finally, they're back, and they're a good thing, because it puts the rubber to the road on what the money's used for. So, having said that, we also, with Padilla's staff, discussed the Lake Shore childcare facility, the Marina Lagoon, and general issues facing Sematow, and we think we're making some traction there. We also decide, asked to provide project updates and photos on any federally funded projects in the city, so that we can continue promoting the positive impacts of funds invested in local communities. So we'll provide those. We also met with the White House Special Assistant to the President on Undergovernment Affairs, and we discussed with Mrs., and I'm going to birch her name, but Sokoloski, I think is how you pronounce it, growing up in a neighborhood that had a lot of Polish people, I have a little adaptation for this. The challenges that Sematow is facing with North Shoreview flood map, and I, I think that was helpful, because when we met with FEMA, that someone else is gonna, they were ready for us when we showed up on that issue. Somebody had told them that we were interested in it, and she recommended that when we meet with FEMA, we should also seek support from the Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities and Flood Mitigation Assistance Grants, as well as, wait till I turn the page, the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, which were recently expanded for stormwater infrastructure. We also discussed homelessness and the city's work on residents experiencing homelessness. Staff were also invited to attend a monthly federal meeting on homelessness that includes city participants. They also shared new literature on the best practices in handling encampments. And, let me get my agenda out here. We, we, as discussed, we met with FEMA and a large number of their staff, I thought they had half of their staff there, there was no room at this huge table for anybody else when they, after they filed in, except for us, actually, I was sitting at the corner of the table. So we shared an update on stormwater infrastructure for us, and how we still needed significant funding for stormwater management levies, but off the top, they talked about the flood map and told us that they thought in July, there would be a decision coming out of revising the flood map, and there would be a 90-day period for people to make comments or to file complaints on it, and that sometime by, I'm going to loosen it up a little bit, they said September, I'm going to say early fall, because I don't want to lead people that are very desperate to get this done to think that it's going to happen immediately. And keep in mind, this is FEMA, after we finished everything with the rest of District Four, it took two years to get people out of the flood map. So it does take time, but hopefully, we're at the end of that time. We also discussed mitigation projects with Homeland Security staff, including emergency planning and allowable activity for many of the grant programs. We also seek funding for this. As part of this, they mentioned that the mitigation planning can be potentially funded by the hazard mitigation grants, which also goes to states. In California, Cal OES will set the priorities for the funding, and their staff, they can help scope out projects with us in advance. And dredging, if dredging is necessary to implement other mitigation projects, city may be able to get some funding for limited dredging, and they emphasize limited. They recommended city staff to try to develop a shovel-ready project, which we already have, in advance of the new round of funding applications for flood mitigation. FEMA staff declared that sea level rise is a high priority for FEMA and is currently being studied. Jurisdictions such as Sematow, who study and map hazard risks are taken into consideration, and the upcoming adoption, adaptation of updated hazard flood mapping can also contribute to the community rating system for flood insurance premium reductions. That was a little personal note concerning to me, because I'm in that area where the updating of the map will be, and we could individually have people back paying huge insurance fees for FEMA if they have a mortgage, and the, the newer people with mortgages they have now are disprohibitive to any more money. Mitigation grant priorities for the National Flood Insurance Program include protecting high-risk properties. I'm going to end it there, because I think the mayor has a lot of things to discuss.
Thank you very much, Council.
And excuse me just a minute, and she gets the pleasure of, of discussing the FEC, which I felt was a bloody hole with very little basis for joy. Go ahead.
And that's why we all had such a good time together, we each played separate parts, so just to, I will try and be a little more fast to finish this up succinct, thank you very much. See, it is a team effort. So on the second day, and the, was it the morning or the afternoon, it got very blurry, but we spent a long time with the Department of Transportation talking about grade separations, which was obviously one of our key priorities, our two major priorities were the Lake Shore Childcare Community Center, and the second one was the dredging of the Marina Lagoon, but number three was the grade separations, because it's so critical to the economics of our downtown, to reuniting our east side and west side, and, and all the reasons we all know. And we were given quite a lot of different ideas as to how we could go about trying to get funding. We also were talking to the Federal Railroad Administration, I guess is what the A stands for, thank you, and that was mostly about quiet zones and the pros and cons of various ways of going forward, where we were in our process, and what we could do, and the greatest advice from them was, once you get the quiet zone, you have to maintain it, or we'll take it away. And that was a big learning for all of us, because they shared some examples of what happened in San Diego when they didn't do the follow-up, and it was a little itsy-bitsy stuff, and they said, okay, this is out, you no longer have it, and there was such a community outcry that they fixed it all in four days. So word to the wise, and for future councils, absolutely, and staff, but I was just, overall, I was so impressed with how responsible, how professional, how comprehensive and calm our Director of Public Works, Matt Fabry, was, because he was the one who had to answer all the detailed questions of so many of these things. So I just want to give him a special shout-out. Our city manager was our affordable housing and homeless program advocate, and did an admirable job in terms of sharing all the things that are going on in Sematow, but all the more we want to do, and called out programs like the HOT program, and the program we heard tonight, the mental health program, and at the Department of Justice, we, we spent a lot of time talking about, as Chief Barberini said, we had so many different needs, and we had put in eight applications, and we gave a lot of credence to all those applications and pushed them as hard as we could, but it was things like the, the homeless outreach team and the mental health team, that I think particularly sparked the Department of Justice COPS team, because it was, knew it was different, and it followed up. It was walking the walk, not just talking the talk. So hats off to our police department, and hats off to all of us for really trying to get some of those grants in. As Councilmember Hedges mentioned, we had a Zoom with almost as many people from the FCC as we did with FEMA, and they, our city attorney had prepared three questions and additional information, they gave us all the information. I guess our net was, we didn't think their response was quite as customer-friendly as it could have been, but it was additional information, and helped prepare us for tonight's presentation, so that was very helpful. And then we finished up the second day, visiting with Representative Mullen and his team, had the great fortune of being there when Samantha Weigel was there as well, because she was in town for a meeting, so it was a nice chance to have a reunion, but Representative was extremely supportive of our desire to get funding both for the Marina Lagoon and for the Childcare Center, and was working with his staff to do what he could, and if there was a point where he couldn't do everything, to go out and, and speak with Senator Butler and Senator Padilla's staff to see if they could come and join in. So I think we felt at the end of it was, it was a very productive day, it was a very tired, tiring couple of days, but the thing that, one of the things that I came away with was there is so much opportunity in terms of getting grants, and lots of other cities are doing it, and doing it very successfully, and congratulations to them, and I think we, when it comes time to reviewing our budget, at the beginning of, you know, when it comes for the next year, we need to really put a high priority in getting funding for a grants writer and for someone to manage it, because there are so many different opportunities across all the different staff departments, and everyone kept looking at our city manager saying, you're going to keep this all in your brain and understand how it all fits together, and by inference, he meant the Assistant City Manager as well, and there is just, there is so much going on and so much need, that I think we need to resource it appropriately. So that was, that was our report, and I thought it was a great experience for all of us.
Could I add a couple of things?
Sure.
So Congressman Mullen was very, very definite that we need to have letters to committee chairs that will go through, and I've already reached out to a couple of people to get it started. It's so important that we do that, and we left out that Matt was so upset that he didn't get to see anything, that he and Samantha rented an electric bike after nine o'clock at night and went riding around Washington, which I thought was pretty brave.
There we go, but it was, it was a good trip, and I just want to say thank you so much to all the city staff who worked for weeks, if not months, and put and get at the information packets that we shared, they were all extremely well-received, lots of good information, concisely handled, and, you know, I just, everyone who was involved, I don't know all your names, but thank you very much, because it really made a tremendous amount of difference.
City manager's good coordination of all of our trips to...
Absolutely, and...
I mean, I'm sorry, the city clerk.
Absolutely, and our, you know, and our legislative consultant...
Martin did a good job.
Legislative consultant, Bob Gaines, also gets commendation, so I think that's, that's us, so shall we reconvene in closed session? Thank you very much.
Did Mayor?
You may want to see if there's anyone who wishes to make public comment on the closed session item, just for the record.
Is there anyone who wants to make public comment on the closed session item?
Sir the Mayor, we have no request to speak on this item.
Thank you, but thank you to the City Attorney for, it's a very important reminder, thank you very much, we will now...